And we are recording. Apparently, the live stream is not working properly. Ms. Newell is trying to get us set up.
Will we know when we are live?
I will let you know.
Ms. Newell is contacting IT.
So if we are not able to stream, if people log on, what do they see? Anything?
No, we will have to put the WebEx information on the district website. It'll be one moment here.
Okay.
If we have to direct everyone to WebEx from from the YouTube site, in addition to putting something on the homepage of our website, would there be a way to post an announcement on our YouTube site since that's where people will be starting?
Am I on?
Yes.
Am I on?
Yes, Nancy.
Yeah, Nancy, you are.
Can you hear us, Nancy?
Nancy, can you hear us now? Your mic is cutting in and out.
Dr. Lee and President Greenberg, we are recording the WebEx event. However, the live stream is not connecting to YouTube. There's an error. And we will put the WebEx information on the district website for those wishing to attend the meeting to attend via WebEx until we can figure out what the problem is.
It will eventually be recorded though and put on the YouTube?
Yes, and they
You'll watch later.
Attendees can join the meeting via WebEx once that information is up on the district website.
Thank you, Deanne.
Deanne, I believe that Mrs. Case is having a hard time hearing us. We could hear her and see her, but she wasn't able to find us.
I think she popped off. I'm not seeing her in the list of participants right now. But we kind of need to get going because it's after 1:00.
Let's go ahead, Deanne.
Okay, I am officially calling the study session to order. If somebody can put up the flag, I would like everybody to join me in the Pledge allegiance. Once the flag, there we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Mr. President, may we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Matura.
Here.
Mrs. Greenberg, here. Mrs. Bacon.
Here.
Mrs. Brown.
Here.
Mrs. Case.
Okay, Mrs. Case was here. I expect she will be back. But is not back yet. I think she's having a bit of a connection problem. I know I'm saying this for our benefit right now, but we are experiencing some technical issues. We are not currently able to stream via our YouTube channel, but we are working on that. At the moment, participants can join via WebEx, which we have noted on the website and I believe are also putting up on our YouTube site. Once we are live streaming, I know somebody will let us know that and we'll all know we're live streaming.
Ms. Greenberg, if I could. Maybe we just hang in here just a little bit in case people want to log in. Just give them a few minutes if they see that on the website.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
I'm absolutely good with that and hopefully we will get Mrs. Case back as well.
President Greenberg?
Yes.
And Dr. Lee, is it possible to put it out on our social media site as well? People might be headed to our Facebook page and just the login information?
Might be difficult to do that right now.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
That's fine. If somebody could just let me know when things are posted, then we'll.
Let's give about one more minute, I think.
That's fine, I'm good.
For those that are listening to us, we apologize for these technical difficulties and we're going to get started shortly. I'm going to leave my seat and check on something if you don't mind.
Absolutely. Well, after I don't know how long doing WebEx, I finally found the grid function. I can see everybody. Of course, that will go away when we have slides up, but at least when there's no slides, I won't be sitting here going, I can't see you.
We have the information on our website and I think it's probably appropriate to get started now. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Hopefully, Mrs. Case will be able to rejoin us soon. I was going to say, for those joining us, we are we want to be cognizant of everyone's time and we know Dr. Lee has invited a number of folks to help us with our discussion on the student learning modalities. And so rather than ask them to wade through the first agenda item, we're going to flip agenda items and start with the student learning modality. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Lee.
Thank you, Ms. Greenberg. I appreciate that. Let me first start off with a few things before I jump into the plan that I'm proposing today. I first want to thank so many people for help in developing this plan. We have a superintendent's leadership advisory committee and they are with us today if questions are needed. But each of those folks represents a group within our district. We have a representative for the teachers, support staff, the United Parent Council, principals, central office administration, and the foundation. And these people are instrumental in helping with the development of any plans that we bring forward. I've used them throughout the years as a sounding board to get input based on their experiences with their groups that they represent. So I want to thank them for being here. And this was challenging for them too, because so often it's a difficult job when you're asked to be the voice of a group. And especially when you don't have opportunities to talk to everybody in your group. You have to go on gut feeling at times and times just from information that people have shared with you. I've tried to be real careful about not getting too much information out there because this is an important topic for everybody and I wanted the board to be the first to hear and see this today. So Slack members, I want to thank you for your help. I also want to thank my cabinet, who have been working diligently to get information and provide resources and the thought behind this plan today also. And then I want to thank all the people I spoke with. I spoke with so many parents. Parents that wanted us in school yesterday, in-person learning, I should say. And then we want to have parents that are eager to send their students to school the rest of the year because of the COVID pandemic. So I've talked to so many. I've heard so many gut-wrenching stories from parents and how they're dealing with this. I'm hearing about students who are having emotional challenges with this mode that we're in. I've heard positive stories about teachers that have done incredible jobs and students who are thriving in this environment. So I'm hearing a variety of things, as you can imagine. And the challenge with putting this plan together today is I know, and I think the governing board knows, that we are not going to please everybody. But I'm hoping that I'm presenting a plan that people can live with. And I'm sure there'll be a lot of people that are happy with it. But more importantly, I think it's a plan that we can live with and move forward in a positive direction and reunite as a district for a common goal of getting our students back in school. The first board meeting, I was here, I said, I called on all of you to join me in coming together to provide the best learning opportunities for our kids, but working together, united, to achieve that goal. I'm hoping today this plan will provide that for you and I hope we can work together to restore a positive feeling that I knew for so many years in this district. And I want so desperately to achieve again. So let's get started. And if you want to throw the plan up there, there we go. What I'd like to do too, if you don't mind, is I'd like to actually take you through the plan slide by slide. And it shouldn't take me more than 20 minutes, I'm thinking. And hold your questions till I'm done, if you don't mind. That way you can, because some of the questions you might have might be answered in a slide that might be coming up. So if you don't mind, I'd like to do that.
Sounds good to me. Before Dr. Lee starts, does anybody have any questions? Let's get some out of the way if anybody's got any right now.
Thank you, President Greenberg.
And again, I lost my grit ability, so I don't see anybody. But since I'm not hearing anybody, turn it back over to you, Dr. Lee.
Well, I wanted to start off with what we know. And just give a little history. We started the year with virtual learning for all students. And then we eventually turned to in-person learning on October 8th and 12th. And then we learned that we had mixed attitudes among parents, students, and staff regarding the return. And I kind of shared some of that with you in terms of the virtual learning. But we also had the mixed attitudes when we returned to in-person learning. We went back to virtual on the 23rd of November. And as I heard from parents in my listening tour, teachers were making the best of the virtual experience. And frankly, I think they were getting darn good at it, based on what I heard, and gaining more confidence. And we're beginning to master the virtual learning process. And we know students are learning, but we also know that many of our students are struggling, not just academically, but emotionally. We also know that these emotional problems are serious. And in some cases, we've used interventions in our district to help families and children who are really struggling. And so I'm proud of the work we've done to help those students and those families. But it's not perfect. Deanne? We also know that Arizona has the highest COVID rate in the nation. I think at one point last week, it was the highest rate in the world. And based on the numbers we received this morning, it's gotten worse. And that's concerning. And I think we have to be concerned not only about our families and our workforce, but at some point in time, we have to be concerned about the community and the community spread. I'm going to repeat a story I told at the UPC meeting yesterday because I think it warrants a repeat. We have a friend of the family and woman's husband was having heart problems and took her to the emergency room this last weekend. Could not get in, had to wait three hours in the parking lot. And sadly, he eventually died. And there's an example of the reality of the civic responsibility we also hold, I believe. And we have a workforce with concerns for their health and safety and naturally, they would. And we have to be concerned about that. We have a shortage of teachers and subs, not as many shortages as some of our neighboring districts have. We worked hard to keep and maintain a quality staff and subpool. And thank you, Dr. Bales, for all your efforts there. We've lost students to neighboring districts. We know that. We've gained some students who wanted to be part of our virtual learning experience, but we've lost quite a few students as a result of the situation. We hear from state, community, and health leaders who often recommend students be in person. Our governor gave the state of the state last week, or excuse me, earlier this week, and talked about the dire situation we're in in terms of COVID. But later went on to say that students should be in school. So we're getting kind of mixed messages, but we are hearing from a lot of our state leaders and local leaders that they believe our students should be in school and they believe it's the safest place for kids, although that is arguable. And the best news of all is we have a vaccination plan in place for all employees. In fact, today, a text went out to all of our employees to sign up for those vaccinations. And we've had a really, really good response and I'm really excited about that. And that, as I said the other night, is a game changer. So here is the plan that I am recommending. I'm recommending we return to learning pre-K through 6th, February 16th. I recognize that's not as early as some of you would like, but I also recognize the fact that all of our teachers and staff will have been vaccinated by then. February 16th is a Tuesday. Monday, there is no school. On the 15th, it's President's Day. And then the secondary would come back. Secondary, 7th through 12th, would come back February 22nd. The other thing that we are recommending is that every Wednesday, there is an early release so that teachers can plan. And the reason this is going to be necessary, it has become very clear, in spite of my lack of desire to incorporate dual modality instruction, it has become increasingly clear by all the stakeholders that I've worked with that the dual modality is the only way possible that we can offer in-person learning as well as virtual learning for those who want to keep their children at home. Now, dual modality is challenging. I certainly recognize that. Our teachers are becoming very proficient with the virtual learning model that we have. But to ask them to go into the classroom with students while teaching virtually is extremely challenging. And they need a Wednesday early release to plan and give them the time they need to provide the best instruction for our students. Along with this, I'm asking all of our parents and students who might be listening to be extremely patient with our teachers. For some, this is going to be challenging. For some, it's going to come a lot easier. But please be patient with them. Give them the positive reinforcement that any human being would need in a challenging situation. I beg of you to do that. They deserve it. So we're going to provide teachers time on that Wednesday to plan and it's going to be uninterrupted time. I ask parents not to schedule parent meetings during that time. I ask district staff to not plan any training or PLC opportunities. This time will be set aside solely for teachers to plan to teach dual modality. I appreciate everybody's support with that. I also want you to know that we're allowing schools to be flexible. And what I mean by that is, I'll give an example that could happen. There may be many examples, but I want to allow schools some flexibility. If, for example, Mrs. Smith, a second-grade teacher at any given school, for some reason was unable, for health reasons, to get vaccinated and would prefer to do virtual. And there are other teachers in that grade level that would prefer to do in-person learning. I want to give schools the flexibility in cooperation with parents and staff to create a different model that would serve those children. So I think that's important here. We have to be flexible. Next slide. Some of the other recommendations coming with this. We're going to provide extending learning interventions. And what that means is we're going to target specific standards and skills at each grade level and identify students who are going to be needing help with those and identify them and provide opportunities for them. We're going to have credit recovery opportunities, math, ELA, social, emotional, for the early grades. Fourth quarter within the school day, and we'll have extracurricular programs. So we're planning for after-school, during-school, any opportunities that we have before-school. We will also provide summer opportunities and fall opportunities. We will not turn any child away from extended learning opportunities. We recognize that some students may have developed some deficiencies as a result of challenges associated with virtual learning. And we want to make sure every child has an opportunity to take advantage of extended learning opportunities. I don't have specific details right now, but our staff has already started working behind the scenes on some of those opportunities. And as soon as we're able to make those available to everyone, the exact details, we will certainly let you know of that. Next slide. So when students walk into buildings, we are going to maintain our mitigation strategies that were developed earlier in the year and, you know, standard operation procedures. We're going to look at large group gatherings, lunch, recess, drop-off, and pickup, and create strategies to help students distance. This is always going to be a challenge, as I said at the UPC meeting yesterday. Students, it's a challenge to keep students from gathering, but we're going to do our best. Obviously, they'll have masks. We'll have hand sanitizers and washing stations, day porters for cleaning, high-touch areas, high-quality air filters that are being replaced regularly. And then we'll wipe down the buses twice a day, along with other things that we'll be doing. But those are some of the major things we'll be doing. And those are on our website, by the way. We will continue extracurricular events. And when I say continue, I mean when students are invited back for in-person learning, we'll start these extracurricular events. Mascot will continue with, of course, the mitigation strategies. Clubs will be allowed to operate. And then athletics will continue following AIA guidelines, whatever day that may be. It's a joke. But we'll follow their guidance on that. Next slide. Then we're creating a COVID response task force. And this is for determining individual schools' needs. And we are going to, as we move forward, assess schools based on the climate within that school or the surrounding community and to make a determination on if there's a need, for some reason, to close the school down or a grade level in that school or a classroom, or whatever the circumstances are. But we're going to watch very closely. And what we have done is we're creating a team. The team is not created yet, but these are the people that will make up that team. We will, of course, use the county as an asset. And then we'll have a director of student services on that committee. We have an elementary director of student services and a secondary. Depending upon the school that we're looking at, the appropriate director will be involved. We'll have an assistant superintendent on that committee, again, or that task force, I should say. Again, depending upon the level, we have an elementary assistant superintendent and a secondary superintendent. We'll have the principal from that school and the school nurse and a lead nurse from the district. And then we will incorporate two medical experts. And we're looking at two folks in the area of infectious disease or epidemiology. And we believe that task force will have the knowledge or expertise to be able to assess what's going on in the school and make decisions for how situations will be handled. So that we're dealing with this whole back-to-in-person phase in on a school-by-school manner. And we're not going to just close the whole district if we have a situation in one school, unless there's other extenuating circumstances that come into play, obviously. Next slide. We also have a score committee that has been very valuable to the district during this time. And they were actually responsible for revising the mitigation strategies for the district. And you can see the participants there. I plan to bring this group together. We're not going to dissolve the score committee. There's some valuable expertise on there. So I'm going to call a meeting within the next couple of weeks and bring everybody together and talk about the plan and their role moving forward. I'm excited to meet with those folks. Next slide. And future considerations. In August, this governing board created metrics that, at the time, were appropriate and were well thought out. And they were done in an effort to keep our students and staff safe. And I applaud this board for their efforts in creating those. And the challenge we have, those were adopted before we had a vaccine. And we've learned so much over the last four or five months. And I believe that it's time that we take a look at adopting other indicators or resources as we make our decisions. And what I'm talking about is the ADHS recommendation or recommended benchmarks, Maricopa County metrics, COVID rates by ZIP code, COVID impact by school site, and possibly more. The COVID response task force will use these metrics along with what they know is going on in the school to make recommendations to me for school-wide mitigations. But I had a meeting with the superintendents across the Northeast Valley Tuesday, I believe it was. Tuesday, I believe it was. And one of the things that we talked about were indicators to determine whether we should have kids in school or not. And what I heard from every one of them is it was absolutely impossible to identify one benchmark or one metric to make the determination on whether kids should be in school or not. It's it's so challenging. There's there's so much more to look at. I think, again, our current board adopted metric was certainly well-intended and was done to keep students and staff safe, as I said. But I think if we use that now for the remainder of the year, we may not be able to get kids back to in-person learning. And I know so many of our families are just dying to get their students back into in-person learning. And frankly, our staff is eager and and I know this governing board is too. So I ask that we take a look at that mandate. It was board-approved, so there'd have to be board action if we're going to make any changes. But I suggest that we use multiple indicators as we look at the safety of students and staff being in our buildings. Next slide. And that is my presentation. I think I did that in 20 minutes. So I'm happy to ask any questions. We have cabinet members here to answer questions. And also, if you have group-specific questions, I'd like for you to be able to ask those Slack members also. Ms. Greenberg?
Thank you, Dr. Lee. I do want to let everybody know that we are back up on our live stream. I know that our attendee numbers have been going up, but if anybody is more comfortable on the YouTube channel, et cetera, that's that's up and running. That's the information I have right now.
Thank you. Just jumped in one. There's one thing I didn't say that's really critical to this discussion, too. There's a reason why our students are not in school or in-person learning right now. And we got the report today and in the COVID numbers, the spread is increasing in our state. This plan is was put together with the understanding that we are going to start to see sometime, hopefully soon, a decline in the spread of COVID in our state, in our community. So I I it's important that I say.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. I know I've been writing little notes and I have questions, but I would like to open it up to the rest of the board. I am sure I am not the only one. So I see Mrs. Matura's hand, and I didn't even have to ask. Mrs. Matura?
Thank you, President Greenberg. I did want to say that definitely when when the metrics were put into place and then reaffirmed later, a few months later, that it was based with the understanding there was not a vaccination coming down the road within a matter of weeks as we are now. So I definitely think that's a game changer in in how we set that and how we are looking going forward, that that definitely changes. At least for me, I can speak for myself, that that is definitely a change for me. I appreciate that the plan gives flexibility to the individual schools. I think that's important. I think that some of the schools have found things that work best for their own teachers and their own students and to be able to allow them to continue with that flexibility. I appreciate that that's part of the plan. I did want to hear from more from secondary about those big daytime events that we are going to have on our campuses again, which would be lunch and passing periods and that sort of thing, which is where we are unable to keep the social distancing. And so that is my big question right now is just the social distancing that is a part of when everyone is saying, you know, every student should be back in school. And they are assuming that all of these mitigation steps are in place. And one of those is social distancing, which I know in our high schools, especially in some of our middle schools, we're not able to achieve that as much as we would like. So I would be interested in hearing more on that.
That's a that's an excellent question, Ms. Matura. First of all, one of the things, the beauties of this plan, I believe, is it creates a natural mitigation opportunity. And what I mean by that is we know that not all of our students are going to come back for in-person learning. We know that. We experienced that in the fall. And based on the feedback and conversations I've had with parents, there are many parents that are not willing to send their children to school right now. And we support that. We're fine with that. So we believe that our classrooms, the spacing that is necessary in the classrooms, this will help that. And we also believe that in in the larger gatherings with fewer kids, that will be helpful too. But I would like to call on Mr. Andre Long. Maybe you could share some of the strategies, Assistant Superintendent Secondary?
Yeah. Yeah. Good afternoon, everyone. The the second, the secondary level, we will continue with a lot of the one-way hallways. The biggest challenge, and everyone knows that, is primarily during the lunch period. And what we're discovering is we have enough places for students to spread out classrooms, cafeterias, larger spaces that have been utilized. But it's going to take everyone. I call it the the broken record that we have to keep saying over and over again. Our secondary students love to socialize together. So while we have a lot of spaces for people to spread out, they like to congregate with their friends. So we're going to have to make more of an effort to ensure that the spaces that are open can all be utilized because some of those spaces were not accessed as much as they should because students wanted to be with their friends. We made a great effort in reducing the number of students at a table. Staff was attempting to be vigilant about only four at this table and making sure that when students were not eating, their mask was on. But it's going to take effort from everyone. The school staff will continue to push those efforts, but we need to make sure that those discussions still happen at home because it is still very difficult to to enforce those when students want to do otherwise. So it will take everyone to work to make sure that everyone stays masked when they're not eating at lunchtime and to encourage everyone to spread out as much as possible. There are spaces to do that.
If I could jump in, Mr. Long, you mentioned classrooms. Are you saying kids are going, we're asking kids to go into classrooms?
Schools have done a little bit, that's a little bit different at each side. They've opened additional classrooms and large spaces for kids to spread out once they get their lunch so that they don't have to sit in the cafeteria or right outside. Some of our middle schools have opened the gyms as well. So there's just a myriad of places for students to to spread out. But sometimes it's difficult because they all start congregating back together again. But there are some additional spaces that are now open compared to what a normal school day will look like when COVID did not exist.
Thank you. Mrs. Matura, did you have some other questions, comments?
I'm good for now, thank you.
Mrs. Bacon, Mrs. Brown?
I do have some comments. I was just giving an opportunity to Mrs. Bacon. So I I just, first, I want to start by acknowledging the amount of work that our cabinet and stakeholder leaders and our superintendent, our acting superintendent have has put in to this effort. I I really value the collaboration and I appreciate how much compromise has had to happen to get to this presentation and this recommendation. I overall am really pleased with the recommendation, but I want to touch on a few things. And that includes a couple of things from a few slides. So so first, there we we talked about, it was talked about slide number two, it was what we know. And one of the things is that that students are struggling on a social and emotional level. And Dr. Lee, you know, shared that we are have been, we have processes in place to address some of this. And it doesn't have to be now, but I would love to know some of the specifics of that. And I absolutely champion whatever it is that we're doing. Then on the third slide, we it talks, we talk about that Arizona has the highest COVID rate in the nation. And I trust that based on what I've seen on the news and the CDC as well. But I think that it is also important that we acknowledge that this, Arizona having the highest rate in the nation, has come at a time while schools have been closed. And in PV, schools have been closed since before Thanksgiving. So we can't forget the idea that we did not, you know, maybe do, maybe we helped mitigate the spread of COVID by closing schools and protected our students and our educators. But the data is sort of questionable about this. And so that's one of the reasons why I'm super happy about the last part of that slide with the vaccine and the work that we're doing. And I've also been really happy with the teachers working so hard on virtual learning. I I know it's not perfect, but I am really grateful for the efforts that they have put in. And in some cases, it has been really impressive. I, but again, you know, just closing schools has not mitigated the spread necessarily. I guess maybe it has. But then slide number four, we, so I'm looking at my notes. The recommendation that dual modality, that 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 teachers continue doing dual modality for those students who will not go back to in-person. I just really want to acknowledge as a governing board member that that is a huge compromise for teachers, that I know that it is a challenge. And I really value that, the work that's going to go into that. So I I just really wanted to say thank you to whomever it is that, you know, made that happen, all everyone working together. And then on, let's see here, the the slide number five, it talks about the record, specific recommendations. And there's a bullet that mentions that math, ELA, social, emotional, and early, early grades. This, I will pause and see if someone can maybe answer this, why we specified early grades. I just, I I should have asked this question ahead of time. And so my apologies, but I I don't, I don't know what, why we, you know, differentiated.
I I think, and Mr. Jarris, if if I'm wrong with this, please interrupt. But I think what we're saying is we will have specific programs for those kids that incorporate social, emotional aspect of learning into them. But we are not going to close our eyes to.
Yeah, no, I, yeah. I knew you wouldn't be closing your eyes to it. I just figured there was a reason that you were specifying early grades. Okay, yeah.
Mr. Dr. Jarris, excuse me. Dr. Jarris, is that?
And specifically with regards to how much social development that happens in those early grades of starting kindergarten, or it's our first opportunity to be in school. So there's, when we, a lot of the teachers acknowledge that when we came back in person, they were academically doing well from the virtual piece of it, but a lot of that interaction piece of it wasn't there. So we want to make sure that we have some very targeted opportunities to support those those areas for the younger grades.
Very good. So and then on that slide also where it talks about, it it references summer opportunities as part of the recommendation. I really appreciate the word opportunities here. And I know that based on what I've seen from our district, that we all understand that that we want thing, these opportunities in summer to not be penalizing to students. We don't want the consequences. And I've learned this from teachers. So this isn't, these aren't my words. These are words that 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 I've been taught from our educators, that we don't want our adult decisions to be in the way and cause consequences to the kids. So I I think that the word opportunities was put in there for a very specific reason, and I appreciate that because when I was growing up, summer school was it's sort of like penalizing. So I.
I'm not alone.
So I appreciate that very much. And then to to Susan, to, I'm so sorry, Mrs. Matura, I apologize for that. I even have a little sticky note here to remind me not to be using first names. But so her concern about social distancing at lunchtime and and then Mr. Long's addressing that with, you know, providing that there's more space. I know that I did a presentation about six years ago about the differences between charter schools and public schools. And one of the huge differences was the size of our campuses. And and I, so I imagine we have space. I don't know what it looks like if we have to have adult supervising at every one of those spaces. And but I also think that if we are providing tables that could be spread out, that maybe they can, I I mean, I don't know what it looks like to to put them in a lot of different areas. But if we could spread tables out outside, especially before it becomes 300 degrees outside, I know that students appreciate being outside during their lunch period and not just inside the classrooms. But I realize that, you know, there are some challenges to that. And so I just wanted to to put that out there. And otherwise, I think that I'm good for now and will, I'm throw it out to whoever else.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown, Mrs. Bacon. See, you have unmuted yourself, so I have to turn it over to you.
I have. Thank you. Dr. Lee and Cabinet and everyone who has been involved in this, thank you for putting together such a well-thought-out plan. I have a few questions and a couple of things that I will reference that my fellow board members referenced. And I think the the point that Mrs. Brown and Mrs. Matura made about spreading out the lunch, there are limitations to that, I believe, because you do have to have adult supervision in every one of those locations. So that will, the ability for our schools to be able to do that depends on how many people they have on campus available to provide supervision. And that typically does not include the teacher because that is their lunch hour or their their lunch half hour, I think, most of them get. So that's just something I want us to understand and parents to understand is a limitation of social distancing on our campuses during lunch. I think the other thing about that piece is the passing periods. From the feedback that I received from some parents and teachers and students was that there was limited mask usage during the passing period, where there was concern about limited mask using during the passing period. So I just want to confirm, A, that that we will have staff trying to kind of monitor that mask-wearing during the passing periods. But also, we we didn't talk specifically, but we are going to continue the mask requirement. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just, that's not, we didn't say that explicitly, so I want to make sure that it it has been said explicitly.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that.
Yeah. The other thing is I'm, I'm wondering, Dr. Lee and, and maybe Mr. Long and Ms., Dr. Jarris can weigh in on this. But is there a way for, and I'm thinking particularly of our high schools because I know some of those classes have 30 something kids in them. And if they're all there, is there some way that we can mitigate that so that the classroom isn't full at all times? So, and I don't know if that's, you know, 10 kids go to the library and participate, you know, virtually, and you kind of rotate those kids. So not the same kids are going to the library, you know, are there ways that, are we going to allow schools to make those kinds of decisions?
Can I answer that? I think.
Yeah.
One, one of the things that, it's a really good question. And one of the things that I've been thinking about quite a bit, and we talked a little bit of cabinet, is we have some time here, which is a good thing too. So we'll have opportunities to work with principals to help them, providing resources, extra resources they need. But really to help strategize, you know, we come together as principals and, and have done this, they've done this already, but do more of it. And really start looking at some of the things that we can do to mitigate the risk. I, I want to comment too, you know, you make a good point about supervision at lunch. Here's the good news. You know, I spent the bulk of my career as either a principal at, at high school or, or middle school or a teacher. And one of the things I learned pretty quickly was the fewer kids you have at lunch and the further they're spread out, the less the need for intense supervision. You're right. We have to make sure we have our eyes on our kids all the time. But that natural mitigation of spreading them out decreases the supervision intensity that is needed for, naturally for our young all Americans.
So what you're telling me is the less kids in one place, the better the behavior. I appreciate that.
When your kids are younger and they be bickering, you'd send them to their rooms, you know, kind of the same strategy.
Yeah. The, the, so that, that's a concern for me. And I think probably for staff is if they're feeling like their classroom is not safe, being able to go to their administrator and say, what, what options do we have? What can we do to reduce the number of kids in the class without them missing out on instruction? So that, that I think is something that we need to be thoughtful about.
If I could just add too, you know, I have to emphasize this because this is so important. I know there are parents out there that are probably not happy right now because they want our kids in school right now. Want their kids in, in in-person learning right now. But the other thing this time gives us, besides the vaccination for staff and besides the fact that, you know, we're hoping this, the spread decreases, it gives us time. Teachers can plan in advance and do all these things that you're talking about or address all these things so that when the kids show up, we're well prepared for. So I, I just wanted to emphasize that too.
So you said at the end that the, the plan will, will require a decrease in what our numbers look like at the moment. And, and at the moment, they're increasing in terms of the, the COVID numbers.
Or the spread you're talking about, the spread.
Yes, the spread. I'm sorry. Yeah. So what, what is the, I, I mean, how are we going to know that it's all systems go? And how long of a timeframe do we need to make that determination? What, you know, what does that look like?
I, I, it's an incredible, well thought out question, Miss Bacon, because it is going to be a challenge. I would like to use that task force to help us with that. And, you know, if, if you have two experts in infectious disease or epidemiologist, their knowledge will be very helpful in, in that decision making. But obviously, if, if you are willing to approve going to multiple metrics or standards to look at, that'll be looked at in, you know, as a whole. And I hope we don't get to a situation where we have to, you know, put out to all parents that we're going back to virtual learning tomorrow or whatever. I, I hope we have opportunities if the situation does worsen, that we have the ability to let them know in advance. And we're looking at the trends. Because one thing that has been surprisingly accurate, not, I shouldn't say surprisingly accurate, but has been accurate is the experts have predicted pretty consistently when the spread was going to be the worst and when the cases were going to go up. And man, they were, they've been really accurate. So I think what we're hearing is that, that this, this trend should start to decrease. We're still working off the holiday spread issues and, and I'm hoping that. But I think that task force, Miss Bacon, will come in handy, real handy for those types of decisions.
Okay. Thank you. When we're, what, what's the timeline for teachers to know who's going to be in person and who's going to be virtual in their classrooms?
It's another excellent question. Part of the challenge we've had is that we haven't consulted with all our teachers. And I, and I know there'll be some teachers that are going to be thrilled with this plan. But I know there's going to be some that are going to be disappointed. But we have time to work with them. So again, time is on our side here. And I would encourage if, if you as a board give us a green light to move forward with this plan, we will be in touch with them immediately. I'm sure many of them are watching right now. And then, you know, we'll work with them, help them, give them additional resources. We are committed to helping the teachers be successful because we know if our teachers are successful, our students will be successful.
And then the last cou- couple of things that I, I, I know that we've talked about in the past, and I think we just need to continue to keep in our thought process is students switching from virtual to in-person and back and forth and what the kind of traumatic effect that has on teachers and classrooms and how we're going to handle that in terms of timeframe, in terms of, you know, if a kid just shows up one day who was virtual the week before, they show up on Monday morning, are we just taking that kid without any notification? That they're coming back, you know, I think we have to have some parameters around that as well.
And, and my intent would be that immediately upon you giving us the green light to move forward on this, to, to start working on those types of things, communication, what our expectation is for what you just mentioned. Because we don't want a revolving door. It's not good for the teacher and it's not good for the students. You know, we understand at times people will change their mind and it, for good reason, and, and we're not going to be inflexible. But I think the more we can communicate upfront of what our expectation is, the less likely those things are to occur.
Okay. And then finally, my last question, and, and before I even ask this question, I want to thank Honor Health and their amazing efforts to get our, our staff vaccinated as quickly as possible. I, I so appreciate the partnership that we've developed with Honor Health and am grateful. And I know this is a question on people's minds, so I'm going to ask it. The, I think, at least from what I can glean, that the immunity for COVID doesn't start until the 10th day after your second vaccination. So if we have employees getting vaccinated on the, the 12th, what was it, 13th, 14th? 12th, 13th, 14th?
School's starting on the 16th.
School starts on the 16th. You know, I, I'm, I'm certain there must be some of our staff that are concerned about that. So I would like to just put that out there.
No, that's, that's, that is a valid concern. But what we, what I think we know, I'm not a doctor. My daughter's in medical school though. But I think what we've learned is after that second vaccine, it reaches full effectiveness after seven to 10 days. That's what I think I'm hearing from, it could vary. But in that ballpark, but you still acquire even a couple of days after that vaccine, you are a lot closer to 100%, I think, than what we may be hearing in terms of its effectiveness. Does that make sense? So you may be at 100% on day eight, but on day four, you, you might be at 90% of the effectiveness. So.
Okay. And I think that's something that teachers probably need to, to have a sense of, and maybe that's part of the communication that you have with them.
Right.
Is here's what we know about the vaccine and utilizing our connections at Honor Health to help put their minds at ease.
Here's the other thing too. There was really a good question and I, and I wanted to talk a little bit about that anyway. The other thing was, you know, we balance that with, I, I think I shared with you last week at the board meeting that our younger kids are the ones that are struggling the most. So the urgency to get them back to in-person learning or those who want it as soon as possible was important also. We also know, I know there's a lot of misinformation out there about the younger kids and the spread and, and their capability. I, I think we have well documented information that maybe the spread might, isn't as high with younger kids. But they do have the capability to spread. But I think we've learned that the risk is a little bit lower and how kids are managed in a school setting, the younger ones were able to mitigate a little better and decrease the risk within the school setting, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Mrs. Matura?
Thank you. Just wanted to follow up with something that Mrs. Bacon had said. Using the, the new committee that will be formed, including the nurses and the doctors and that sort of thing, to look at the trend lines for hoping we are trending down. But in the meantime, we're going to proceed as though all systems are go and planning and coming up with all the strategies and that sort of thing. And then, so that would be, right now we'd be planning all systems go and then look at the data as we're getting closer to the date. But in the meantime, planning for a go and not waiting until we have further information to be planning. Is that?
Absolutely. We want to be ready on the 16th and the 22nd and, you know, we're hoping that works for us. That's our plan. But by then we'll have, well before then, we'll have our task force in place and someone who can guide us.
Great. Thank you.
President Greenberg, this is Mrs. Chisman. I have Mrs. Case on the line. She would like to make a comment.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Nancy. Mrs. Case.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, they can.
Okay. I just have a couple of comments. Thank you, first of all, and I apologize my inability to get on. I have no idea what happened. Okay. So I want to say thank you to all the cabinet members and Dr. Lee for their diligence and working on this over the break and to working toward getting the vaccines for our teacher. That is fabulous. I'm so appreciative. And I also want to say thank you to all the stakeholders who have participated in making these choices and who have come together and who have compromised even things they didn't want to, as the board has to also. I appreciate everyone's willingness to step forward and to go forward. I have a couple of out of the box ideas here. Mrs. Bacon was talking about her concerns about lunchtime and I was just wondering, could we not put kids in groups in the stadium? We have lovely weather here. Just have them all over and you could have not as many people watching them in the stadium in various corners and they could probably be, I don't know, assigned ABCD in different areas. And just an idea to spread kids out. We have lovely big spaces on our campuses, as was mentioned, and I think that's one that we could use.
That's certainly something.
And the chairs are already set up all the time. So also, how about using our, the outside during classes? Could we not use classrooms outside when we have a large group? I don't know why we couldn't. I, I think that's a possibility that has not been explored. And we certainly have the weather to do that. So I think we could use that for some of our big classes. And I think these kids would totally enjoy it also. Also, something completely, completely, completely out of the box. Could we have spring break early and before our, our students go back to in-person learning? And have spring break early this year? And it would have to take some immediately asking teachers, but I'm afraid we're just going to get started back into a routine and then have spring break. And I know everyone needs a break. I understand that. Teaching online is hard. Learning for students online is hard. And I'm not saying we don't need a break. I'm just saying shift the break to the time when we don't have in-person availability. It's just an idea, totally out of the box. Another one is I believe each of us is charged as school board members and everyone that I know that is involved in the district knows that our district wants to, we are charged with free in-person public education to all those within our boundaries. And the in-person is what has been such a struggle in our district. And I applaud that we're trying to get back to that as quickly as possible. And I just want all of those parents and all of those teachers too, who have been really wanting to be in person. I hope that you see some light at the end of the tunnel and that these ideas are giving you hope. I would like to go back sooner, but I don't think that's a possibility, given all the things that have been reached and considered. And I know they have been thoroughly considered from every angle. And I remember being frustrated when I first was on the board and a fellow board member said, we are a big ship. And that made me not a little, not a little boat, but we're a big ship. And so we have to consider, and by law, we have to consider many things that perhaps a smaller school would not need to consider as far as eligibility. When we open our doors, that they have to be open to everyone. And there are many laws that are restricting to us, and I appreciate that we have done the very best we could. I wish it could be in person sooner with all my heart. And, but I believe that we have come to the best compromise that is possible. And I hope that we can go forward these plans. And I'm so grateful for Banner and for Dr. Bells for working that out and for allowing our teachers to have that opportunity to get immunized as quickly as possible. And I'm very grateful for that. And I, I believe this can be our game changer and we certainly need it one. I think that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Case. If I could just respond to a couple of your things. I really like the idea of classrooms outside and, and getting students out in the outdoors as soon as we can. I know technology, because we're going to be doing dual modality, could be a challenge. And maybe cause problems for some when we do that. But for those that can pull it off, I would encourage it. It's, it's a good idea. As far as the moving the brake. you know, it could be a good idea. I, I think that's one of those that we're, we're getting pretty close if we're going to do it before our current spring break, which makes sense. I don't know of the impact that that would have on people who may have already planned for the break at a certain time. I don't know. I'd love to hear from the rest of the board on that.
Could you remind us what the, the current date of spring break is? For somebody?
The, the 15th, Monday, the 15th. I have the date right. I'm pretty sure I do.
Of March?
Of March, that week.
So the, the request would be to move it up a month, an entire month? Okay. And Mrs. Bacon, I see you have your mic off. Would you like to jump in?
Yeah, I, I think that that's, it is a good idea, but I can't see our staff or students going to school from February 16th to May 20th with a day or two break. I, I just, I think that's a lot to ask of all of them. So, I mean, we'd have to move, if we were moving it before we went back, it would have to be the week of February, what, 9th? Which is not that far away. That's less than a month away.
That's the challenge, I think. It's really short notice for people.
I, I have a comment about that as well, if, if Mrs. Bacon is finished.
I am.
I don't think that we as a board can decide what the students or families or teachers would be thinking without surveying them. And I think that that is important, but I do value the idea that typically students and educators and families need a break in, in that, during that time. But like we all keep saying, this is a pandemic and things are different. So maybe we should ask and, and see where people stand on that. Not just ask the stakeholder leaders, but literally, you know, survey our community.
And we have short notice to do that too. So that'll, that will be a challenge. You know, I, we can, if the board wants us to move forward with a survey or some sort of, we can do that. I think this case makes a, a really good point though. And, and I think another board member had mentioned this to me too, about thinking about starting school later in fall, allowing the vaccines to spread throughout the community more and, you know, an opportunity to really get this COVID pandemic under control. A couple, few more weeks might help, but I know that's a long ways away, but that's another thing we could think about too, if we wanted to.
If I could, could say something too. I, I think one of the things that we have seen and that, you know, Dr. Lee mentioned is that the experts have noted the trends pretty accurately. And, you know, one of the trends is after specific holidays slash breaks, we tend to see a rise. And my concern would be is that if we were, I, I, again, I think it's an idea that if we want to pursue it, we, we should survey. But if we schedule an earlier break and potentially that contributes to a rise and we are still in the, you know, phase two part of the vaccination for our employees, could those potentially hit at, at a less preferred time, shall we say? As opposed to doing it even slightly later when we know that the, you know, seven to 10 to 14 day point after the second vaccination has, you know, come into play. So I think if, you know, we probably need to look at the overall timing aspect.
You know, you, you make a really good point, Ms. Greenberg, because every time there's been a surge, it's been after a break or a period and, and though the whole state won't be taking the same break if we change, our community won't be. And, and so that is a really valid concerning. In fact, there are some districts I know that have canceled breaks. I think, didn't ASU cancel their spring break? For those, of course, kids are flying in all over, from all over, but the, the idea is the same, that we reduce it. So. Yeah.
Well, canceling spring break sort of negates the idea. I know that you're not suggesting that. I'm just saying that that solution sort of negates the point that, that Mrs. Bacon made about needing, needing a break. So however, there's certainly been some validity to what President Greenberg has said. And I would just like to, I think what you both have, have done a little bit, but just sort of second it, that, that the, the vaccine will play a part in how, in, in potentially changing that trend a bit. But it also is, you know, does, does that mean that we would be planning on closing schools again because we have an existing spring break and then they, and then numbers go up again? Or are you saying that the vaccine would be more effective by the time we get to our currently scheduled spring? Okay. Yeah.
Yes. And I think also, you know, maybe increase our efforts in educating families about precautionary measures over spring break so that we don't increase the spread within our community. I don't, I don't know that we've done a great job with that and maybe we could improve our efforts and just, you know, without insulting anybody's intelligence. I know we're hearing a lot, but, but we do know that we have evidence to prove it, that over times and there's gatherings, the, you know, the infection rate goes up. So maybe we can do some things and offer some suggestions that might be helpful in that regard.
President Greenberg, I have Mrs. Case on the line.
Thank you.
Hi. As far as, I mean, I wasn't trying to usurp this idea and I know it's taken some discussion. I mean, usurp the meeting, but if, if we were to do it then, there's not as many people on spring break. So you could say there would be less interactions and, and, and community spread because other school districts would not also be out. So you can look at it from different angles, but I think we could, we need to ask teachers and parents, you know, if there's a small percentage that says that this is a good idea, or if there's an overwhelming, I think we just need to ask the question. And Dr. Lee, I don't think it takes a lot to get a survey out in this district if it's not a complicated survey. I think it's pretty quick. So I think we can survey parents pretty quick and teachers pretty quickly. It's just an idea and we can say this is an idea. It's not, I don't want to scare anybody if they have plans or something. It's just an idea to see what kind of response there'd be. But I think you would have perhaps the same amount of spread in March as you were, would in February. And I know your teachers are being immunized, but not particularly families yet. So I don't know if there would be that much difference in the spread as far as letting the immuniz, the, the, it to get out. So I'm just, it's just an idea. I think we owe it to some parents to ask the question, but perhaps not. And that's everyone's decision. I'm just one board member. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Case. No, those are good ideas. I think probably the time would be okay when we get the survey out and then getting the results back and then make it a determination based on the results. The whole process would be time consuming. You know, I'd like an opportunity to talk to Slack. We have a meeting next week. I'd like an opportunity to talk to them. That's all the stakeholder groups. And maybe we do more of a comprehensive survey about, it's like the start of the school year next year. But let me start with them and get some thoughts and ideas and maybe I can report back to you on that, if that works for you guys.
Mrs. Greenberg?
Yes, Mrs. Bacon.
If I could. I think that's, I think there's been, I think there's a little survey fatigue in both parent and staff communities. I have had more than one staff member say to me, please not another survey. So if we're going to do a survey, I think it is a very good idea to have it be comprehensive instead of it being on one issues and then three weeks later, another survey on another issue and then three weeks later. So, so that's what I would have to say about that. I think the, the one thing about moving spring break is if we were to move it earlier, we're moving it into a time where the community spread is significant. And hopefully in March, community spread won't be as significant. And so there's less risk with a March spring break. I think you could probably slice this pie 800 different ways. So I think it's a good idea for Dr. Lee to, to work with Slack. And, and I don't know if this is something that you'd want SCORE to also have input into. So that's just.
I certainly could. You know, I agree with you, Ms. Bacon. I've heard that, that we're over surveying people and don't you dare send me another survey and I get it. We are, we do our annual parent satisfaction survey. We're intentionally not doing it now, what we usually do, because we feel like parents are saturated with that. Maybe this is something we could incorporate in that when we do that, so that they're getting just that one survey and not a whole bunch. Just a thought. Okay.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Because I, I've got a couple of questions I'd like to jump in on or not jump, jump in with. I don't know. I apologize for my propositions. One of the, again, I, I want to echo my thing or, or, you know, my thanks as well to, to Dr. Lee, to Cabinet, to Slack, to everybody who's been contributing. You know, from the moment we closed down last March, you know, returning to in-person learning on a sustained basis has been our goal, you know, 24/7. And so I appreciate that we are, that, that we have gotten these recommendations. And I very much appreciate our partnership with Honor Health. Dr. Bells, please, you know, thank Mrs. Pappas again and again and again, that we are able to do this. I know that we do have some staff who have already gotten their first vaccinations. I've seen lots of pictures on social media. So I, I know that, you know, our teachers and our educators here in, in districts around the state are, are showing up at State Farm Arena and, and other places to get their vaccinations. So I feel that that is a significant step forward for us. One of the mitigation strategies that we really have not been able to initiate, and I don't know that we can, but that I truly would appreciate us looking into is one that we've sort of talked in the abstract, and that's rapid testing. I think the vaccinations are phenomenal, but they only protect the person who's been vaccinated. And unfortunately, they don't protect that person from being a potential nexus of infection. And so, you know, although we are able to extend this to our employees, we are not able to extend it to our employees' families. And certainly we are not able to extend it to our families and our students right now. And yes, obviously, we will continue, we as a community, as a state, we as a nation, are going to continue to roll out vaccines, you know, ad infinitum right now. And hopefully that will, you know, create the immunity and get those numbers down, period. But I also believe that if we can look into the possibility of rapid testing, because that capability increases and, and that research has been, you know, producing enhanced ability, I think that will also help. I, I, you know, that can give us the ability to, to know if a student or somebody walking onto campus is positive and doesn't know it. And so I think if we can look into where that is right now and what are, what, you know, if we, if we can tap into that in some way, I think that will be huge in terms of creating this, a safer environment in our schools for, for everybody who's there. So I would just like to throw that out and I don't know if that's something that goes to SCORE or that's something that, you know, perhaps some of the medical experts on the task force can, can help us with. But I'd really like to see us get some sense of, of whether we can tap into, to that, that part of, of what, you know, science is giving us right now. I also, I, I do appreciate that we're putting together this, you know, task force to look at what happens on an individual school. I, I guess I'd like a little more clarity because it sounds like some of the member, I mean, the members will change based on the school site. Dr. Lee, is that what we're saying? Or is there just going to be a silver, sort of overall task force?
Well, the, the, the things that will be, I'm going to pull up that list again one more time, if you don't mind. The things that will be constant are the two medical experts, the lead nurse for the district, the assistant superintendent, because we have an elementary and a secondary assistant there, but that person will be consistent at whatever level. And same thing with the director of student services. The only thing that would change would be the principal who's at the school and the nurse would be at, at that school, be added to the equation.
Okay. So my question is, are we going to ask this task force to come up with parameters? And then if something happens at a particular school, see what happens in terms of those parameters? I mean, I'd really need to say, oh, school A, X happened, whatever X is. And then school B, X plus Y happened, but, but we decided that school A needed to close for 10 days, but school B didn't. Or, you know, what, you know what I mean? So it's like.
I think, yeah, that's a really good question. And one of the things that I've learned in this business is every school situation is different. And when we're, when we're pertaining to COVID, every situation is different. For example, you could have a cheerleader who, you know, was working with the cheerleading squad and then we have to do some contact tracing with that and determine where it is. And once we get all the information together, then the, you know, the, this task force can take a look at, okay, what are the implications of what happened and what we know? And then make a determination. You know, you might have a small self-contained special ed class where the student didn't come in contact with any other student. Do you know what I'm saying? So every situation is different and that's where having the director of student services, the assistant superintendent and the principal involved in that decision to be able to help even the medical doctors understand exactly, you know, how the school functions and, and the ins and outs of student traffic and so on and so forth. And between all of these, which I'll call experts, they'll be able to make a determination of what's best for that school or that classroom or whatever. So in answer, I, I don't know if I answered your question because there's no specific formula that we can plop in to each situation.
Okay. So, you know, just to tease this out, I do understand what you're saying, but just tease this out a little bit. So we are not, as I know, some districts have done. In, some districts have said if there is an X percentage outbreak in. In some districts have said, if there is an X percentage outbreak in a school in their district, they have shut their school, that school down. So what we're saying is we're not going to take that type of, we'll, we'll use the word metric because that's what it is. We're not going to, you know, apply that type of metric in this situation. What we're going to say is, oh, okay, over at school A, we had, um, you know, three positive cases in classroom, you know, 30X, you know, and so we're going to quarantine that classroom, but we're not going to shut the school down. But over in school B, we realized that, you know, they had the same three positive, whatever it is, but unfortunately, one of those students was in this, 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 and this. And so the potential for spread might be larger. We may feel the need to ask that school to go virtual until we can determine.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And, but I think we still with this task force and we'll be meeting with this task force. And this is another reason why we have a little time here to assemble this group and have some discussions like the one we're having now. And hopefully come up there, we will have to use some metrics. The question is what, what that'll look like? And is that different than high school, middle school element? You know what I'm saying? So, uh, but I, I think once we get this group together, I will be able to share more information on you for things like that. That makes sense?
Okay. Yes, it does. And I appreciate that. The other thing I would just like to, you know, get in my head a little bit, and I know you and I have talked about it, and I know you've talked about it with, with folks, is at the, the, after we had introduced, you know, after we'd gone back in person and we were using dual modality. At that time, and I know that that was earlier, but at that time, we were hearing how difficult it was to teach in a dual modality setting. Now we are asking our teachers to return in a dual modality setting. I know you have said we have not, we, because of survey fatigue, we have not really, you know, necessarily surveyed, but could perhaps Mrs. Seep, um, and, and even Mr. Webster as well, you know, sort of jump in a little bit and, and provide a little bit of the teacher perspective on, on the dual modality. And in terms of, I know that we're also overlaying the early release, um, which was one of the strategies we had talked about.
Yes, that, that's good. Hello, Mrs. Seep, how are you?
Oh, I am well. Um, thank you for being here today. About dual modality, teaching in the dual modality is really hard. We've heard a lot about, it, it does seem to be almost a direct correlation with students' ages and abilities, uh, that, that, that the readiness improves and the ease of teaching in a dual modality improves. I don't mean to imply that it's easy for high school teachers, but I will say it's a little bit simpler. Uh, in terms of not having to get paper to as many kids, not worrying about the types of manipulatives that younger students are working with, right? They're just, and also it's a little bit easier to build an online breakout group for your high school students and let, let them go do that, right? It, it's a lot harder to ask your virtual kindergarteners to pop into a breakout group and regulate their own activity um, without a teacher being in there with them. So, yeah, it's, dual modalities are challenging. I think that teachers have truly, as much as they want to honor parent choices and, right? They have their own children in the district. They have their own feelings about it. A lot of them have been teaching in person while their kids are learning online because they feel safest that way. And they still understand, so they do understand how hard it is for kids to learn virtually. We'll say that a lot of teachers have truly hoped that the longer we delay the reopening, first, the more people will have been vaccinated, not just among the staff, but within our communities because they're in group one A or one B. But also that the counts get, the, um, uh, uh, the better the case counts get, hopefully the more of our families will return in person. And so that, right, the fewer kids you have learning virtually, the easier it is to both support them and keep things moving for everyone. Um, I would say that the alarming rise in cases that have happened over the last couple of weeks make many teachers hesitant to feel confident that students are going to come back at high percentages, especially if we jump right back in. I would say that's um, just the general mood, obviously, as Dr. Lee pointed out, I haven't talked specifically about these dates or this rollout with teachers. Cause we did want the board to have a chance to talk about it first. But I, I, I am already hearing from some people since, you know, since the beginning of this meeting. And I would say their question is a lot like, uh, Mrs. Maturis' question, um, about what, what really is going to be the driver selected dates and the plan or the, um, the trends that we're seeing? Right? Like if case counts continue to rise over the next three weeks, are we sticking with those dates or are we? Is that going to be a, uh, is there one that's going to take priority over the other? Teachers are concerned, um, about that. We know that kids can catch it. We know that vaccinated folks can spread it. So as much as we all want to get back in person, I do, Dr. Lee's right about that. I think the board has heard that from a lot of teachers. There are no teachers that believe this is better or easier or that their kids are getting a better education than they used to. Uh, except for in certain cases, right? Where kids have sort of blossomed in this model. But it's the stopping and starting and changing that requires our kids to recalibrate every time we change the schedule. And it's less urgent that we go back quickly. And I feel more urgent for teachers that when we go back, that's it, right? They, a- as has been said earlier, we don't want to go back and then do this again for fourth quarter, right? Right? We want to go back and stay. I hope that answers the question.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Mrs. Seep. And I, and I think what you just said is, is exactly what everybody's feeling. When we reopen, we want to be open. You know, no yoyos, no, um, oh my gosh, case counts just want this. We want it, we want to reopen our, our, for in-person learning and stay in in-person learning to the extent that we can. And I don't see anybody shaking their head, um, to, to contradict that. Um, so thank you, Mrs. Seep. Dr. Lee, I do have, I, I don't know if this is as much a question as I comment, but I'm, in the end, it may flow into a question. Again, as, as others have said, I very much appreciate that we are looking at providing opportunities for our students, um, to help perhaps fill in some gaps that they may, we may find they're, they're facing, um, et cetera. I, I, I think, you know, one of the things, and I've seen, um, various discussions of this in, in different places, you know, certainly within our district, but, but outside. And I think that's the, um, looking at what are the yardsticks that we're using to measure whether there may be a need or not? You know, we, we talk about the, the concern that our kids have to catch up and the reality is, is we are in a worldwide pandemic. So pretty much I think where our kids are is where most kids are. You know, where our community is, is where most communities are. And are we really looking at? And I think we really have to differentiate, or at least this is my opinion, between what are we really seeing in an individual student? That they need, that that student needs to help them be more successful in their reading or their math or their other skills as opposed to, oh, we still have to do a standardized test and maybe they didn't do so great on a standardized test, which is an imposition that we are, you know, that, that we as a, as a society are putting on them, not necessarily where, you know, oh, they didn't know that fact or that, you know, piece of data. So I just, I want to make sure that when we talk about these opportunities, that, that we really are addressing, you know, helping our students in terms of, you know, oh, they didn't, you know, maybe it was the virtual really did create a point where they didn't pick up X, Y, and Z as opposed to, oh, you know, they didn't, they didn't prove to be proficient on a, on a test that I don't know why we would administer in a pandemic. You know, so do you see where I'm going with that? You're muted.
Sorry.
Thank you.
You probably wanted to do that earlier in the meeting.
Yeah.
Just teasing. It's a good point. And, and I think our, our teachers are really skilled in general at determining what those deficiencies are. I heard stories of from back in the fall when the kids were out virtually and then they came back, um, that the teachers could, were pretty good at picking up where their deficiencies were and, and they got them caught up pretty quickly in those areas, which is really encouraging to hear. Now, we don't have any specific data on that, but, uh, you know, we, we heard from some teachers that that was the case. And, and I, I just think as a teacher, you get to know your kids pretty well and it won't take long for them to figure out where those deficiencies are, I believe. And the good news is if, if some of them don't take advantage of the spring opportunities for extended learning, by the end of the school year, we'll know who those students are and we'll want to make sure that we get them in those summer opportunities that will help them out.
And I, and again, I appreciate that. And I think it is, you know, phenomenal that, that we are pinpointing that and that we are doing that. I, you know, my point was, I just want to make sure we are, we are doing it to benefit the students. And that we are focused, and I know our teachers are, this is not, this is not a comment on our teachers. This is more a comment on, you know, making sure we're doing this to, to know that our students are where, you know, we know that, that, that we're filling in those blanks, not just checking off boxes.
Yep. No, that, yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, does anybody else have any other comments, questions? Mrs. Brown, I see your mic is off.
Um, I just, yeah. I just wanted to, um, address some of what my fellow, uh, what you and some of my fellow board members have touched on in their comments that I maybe wasn't, you know, able to, to comment on before. Uh, and I also forgot to address, Dr. Lee said at the beginning of, uh, his comments to begin with were that he, that we know that we can't make everybody happy. And while I know this is true and I know this statement is made all the time, I am a little sensitive to the statement, not because I think it's wrong, but because I don't feel like we're really trying to make everybody happy. And I do not want to be doing that either. I just want us to stick to what it is that we can do for kids. And I think that that's always been what our district has, you know, focused on. And it, it really is about sticking to the principles, some guiding principles and, and policies that we have. So, um, then also, um, I wanted to just comment, um, Mrs. Bacon's concerns with switching from virtual to in-person and the traumatic effect that it has on teachers. I certainly have heard that as well. And I, I absolutely think that, um, that is important to take into consideration and her, um, ma- suggesting maybe there are parameters or how we do that. I just also want to, um, and I know she feels this way, or I'm, I'm pretty sure she feels this way and we all do as well, that the traumatic effects of students not being in person can't be forgotten in that process. So we absolutely have to consider the parameters for the benefit of everyone, especially a teacher just trying to start their school day. Um, and not having to bring in extra chairs and redoing their seating chart that day as a result of not giving any notice that a student comes in. But again, I want to be careful about our consequences adversely affecting students. And so I know that we always keep that into consideration, but I, um, I wanted to, you know, just, just, uh, remind people that that is also a consideration that I have. Mrs. Bacon asked some specific questions that Dr. Lee addressed about the vaccination efficacy. And I was hoping that maybe Dr. Bales would have, um, something to say about it. I would ask that maybe Dr. Bales can wait just a minute while I get through the rest of my comments. And then, uh, we'll just, they come back to that. It just happens to be in the order that, uh, it came up. If, if Dr. Lee, if, if that's okay, that, that Dr. Bales, um, addressed some of that later. And, okay. And then, um, I know that we had some discussion about spring break being earlier and, and, uh, starting school later in the fall was mentioned. It's, it's been suggested to me that we keep school in session longer this year. I've heard keeping longer school days. I'm not, uh, suggesting that we do, um, any one or all of those things. But I, um, I hope that that has been, um, you know, those considerations have been discussed and I trust that the process that the district has will vet that out with, with our cabinet. And then I want to address from a parent point of view, the survey fatigue. I absolutely think that there are people who have survey fatigue. And for those people, it is irritating to receive a survey, even the email, regardless of whether or not they complete it. I, um, understand them not completing it because they have survey fatigue. But what I'd like to stress for somebody from my point of view as a parent is that I would like surveys, I would like to be asked. And sometimes those that are supposed to represent me aren't necessarily representing exactly my thoughts. And the only way we can do that is through a survey. So for those who don't want to respond, absolutely their option. But for those who'd like to be, um, have their input considered, I, I don't know of another way that that can happen. I also, uh, I really valued, uh, President Greenberg's comment on the rapid testing. I think that the, it is really a very good idea to, to, um, look into. Uh, I, I see how that would be super valuable. And I, uh, and then also really, also related to President Greenberg's, um, comments, but, um, what Mrs. Seep said, um, about being concerned about teachers, you know, the, the, wanting, uh, our schools to, once they open, be open and being, you know, very careful about that. And consideration of, um, of the metrics, whatever they end up being, not necessarily the specific metrics that we have now, but what it is that Dr. Lee and Cabinet, uh, determine with the help of the SCORE committee and, and that process. I, I, I just want, um, the teachers and Mrs. Seep to, to know that I, uh, that we want them we want them to feel safe as well, um, with the goal of just being open as, you know, as soon as possible. And, um, and then, um, I want to also, uh, to echo what President Greenberg said about, um, about, being mindful of the yardsticks that we use and use in measuring the, uh, gaps and not just being about, um, you know, a standardized testing, uh, model. I, I'm not an educator, so I know that our educators will figure that out. I have full confidence, but I just wanted to echo her sentiment, um, in that. And, um, that is all I have with, uh, in hoping that I'll, uh, maybe Dr. Bales can answer some of the, the vaccination questions.
Dr. Bales?
Good afternoon, President Greenberg, Mrs. Brown, and Governing Board and Cabinet. In response, I'd like to share with you, uh, my personal thanks to Honor Health as well. They are certainly the community provider, the vaccination provider for our zip code. We were one of 19 that were assigned to them. And so they're fulfilling their community responsibility. And we're just thrilled that, uh, they recognize this as one of the largest employers for one B essential workers and are coordinating with us, a special drive-through event for us. They've been, uh, responsible for working with, uh, variety of school districts and, uh, even our neighbors to the north and as far east are also working on getting their teachers vaccinated as the responsibility of Honor Health in this area. So my, my kudos to Honor Health as a community partner with us and serving the Northeast Valley. We did ask Honor Health for some guidance, uh, when we were discussing this return to in-person learning. One of the things that our vaccination provider shared with me was is that peak immunity really arises, hits that peak immunity about seven days after the second shot. And so with our planned vaccination plan, we hit peak immunity on the 21st. And that's why we have the 22nd. We also know that with a staggered start, uh, that peak immunity is really, uh, starts to hit its efficacy about 48 hours after the second shot. And there's about a 3% difference from what I've been told, uh, between that 48-hour time and the seven-day time. So between two days and five days, uh, there's not a whole lot of difference. But, um, the combination of that as well as, um, what, what many perceive as, um, the spread or infection rate among children. And I know people have different opinions, there's different information about that, but we tend to see fewer kids at the primary level. So a staggered start matches with some of the conversations we had last fall when we did a return to in-person. It supports the idea, um, around the vaccination and when we start to hit that immunity. So once again, the vaccination is a game changer and allowing our workforce to be vaccinated. On a side note, uh, you know, we, we have about a 90% uh, response from our staff on the request, uh, the intent to vaccinate. And, uh, over 2,700 have said that they would. And, uh, another 500 have said no, but many of them have reached out to say the no was because I've already been vaccinated or I'm already scheduled in another venue. So we're really confident that we have a very high, high percentage of our workforce that will be vaccinated, uh, by the, by the skill, the event scheduled with Honor Health. Many will be for that date, but certainly by the end of our second date. So we're excited about that because it is a game changer. I'd be happy to answer any other questions or follow-ups.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bales. Does, and Mrs. Brown, do you forgot?
So you mentioned the date of the 21st, but that is the, that is for the older kids. But you, you differentiate, Dr. Bales, you differentiated, um, the, the infection rate among younger children as the reasoning for starting, uh, them earlier? Is that what?
I think there's apples and oranges. First of all, the, the seven-day, the 21st is peak immunity. Seven days is considered peak immunity from what I've been advised by our vaccination.
Right.
So if you hit peak immunity, if you're vaccinated with the second dose on February 12th, you reach peak immunity on the 19th. For those that are the last to be vaccinated in our plan, peak immunity would be the 21st. But in combination to that, that's some information. The other information is what we have been, you know, uh, shared, information shared about the, the spread among children. So it gives us the opportunity to look at, uh, a start date, a staggered start date because we have hit, you know, some immunity 48 hours after for everybody. But we may have not reached peak immunity. But then what we're told is that there's, you know, maybe as much as 3% difference between that 48 hours and seven days. But that's just what I've been shared with, uh, from our vaccination provider.
So the, the 48 hours, you mentioned the specific, did you say there's 3% difference between their immunity level 48 hours after the second shot and seven, and the, um, five days later? There's only 3% difference? Is that what you said?
That was one piece of information shared with me, yes.
Okay. And then, um, and the staggered start was, uh, I, I got that the staggered start is, is apples and oranges. That is two different things. I was just thinking that maybe that was what, how it was determined that we would start earlier but, um, with, um, the K6 versus, you know, the older students. But it also is just a matter of the fact that, um, the younger kids are having a harder time online, I suppose. Maybe. Okay. All right. Yeah, I think Dr. Lee said that to me before. So that, that's it. That answers my questions. I will go back to muting myself.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Thank you, Dr. Bales. Mrs. Bacon, I see you are muted.
So I think the first thing, um, that I want to acknowledge is, um, the work that's gone into this, which I, I really appreciate. I think we would be remiss to not acknowledge our employees', um, concerns about going back in person. So I think that's something, um, that I would like to at least do is acknowledge that this is a little scary. And, um, that, that we'll do everything we can, um, to protect our, our employees and families as much as possible. So, so that's what I wanted to say. And then the second thing I wanted to ask is that our families who are listening, who desperately want to go back in person, and even those who don't desperately want to go back in person, please do everything you can to keep yourselves safe when you're, they're not in school. And I think, you know, if that means, um, not letting kids do certain things, maybe that's what we have to do to keep schools open. But it's going to take sacrifice on everyone's part to keep our students, our families, and our staff safe. So I would just implore you to do y- your part and the best that you can, um, to keep us all safe.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bacon. I, I saw a lot of heads going up and down, so I think we all, um, uh, feel the same. Dr. Lee, do you have anything else you want to add? Is there any further discussion of this topic?
Just, just a couple of things. I'm not, it's to reiterate, I, I appreciate what Miss Bacon shared about the staff and the teachers. We're, we are committed to helping teachers be as successful as possible. And I, I know Mrs. Seep is here and, and, uh, I've known her for a while. I just want her to make sure that the teachers know that we've got some time before we go back into in-person, but we are here to help. I want to hear what the needs are. And we want to support teachers as best we can because we know that the teacher makes a difference. And we've got some credible teachers in this district who are very committed to our students and are eager to give back, but we want to support them. The other thing I, I wanted to say is, well, a couple of things. I want to make sure that you guys are giving me direction here to move forward with this plan and communicate it tomorrow in my email out to the community, staff and, and families. Want to make sure that you're okay with me or us moving forward. And I'm, I'm think I'm seeing a nod of approval. Uh, Ms. Case, Mrs. Case, I assume you're okay?
Mrs. Case has a comment.
Hi, I so apologize for my techno problems. I just had a comment here. Dr. Bales, you mentioned the intricacies of the effici- the effectiveness of the, um, immunizations. Has that been, uh, communicated directly to teachers?
Uh, Mrs. Case, I have not put that in writing to, um, to teachers. It's information.
Is that possible for Dr. Bales to answer that?
He is answering it.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I.
Can you hear me?
Say that again, please.
Can you hear me, Ms. Case? I think that, uh, you know, I, I would definitely like to quote a, uh, an infectious disease doctor and epidemiologist, but I can encircle back with our vaccination provider to try to give us something in writing that we can share.
Did you hear that, Mrs. Case? We'll ma- I'll make sure that she, she gets that message.
Yes, we can hear you, Mrs. Case.
Okay, but I can't hear them. I, at three o'clock, I was knocked out. It closed down, the audio closed down at three because it said it was from one to three.
Could you, Dan, could you share with Mrs. Case that, uh, we're going to get something, uh, some information from our provider and, and we'll distribute that to the staff? Sorry, folks, the technical difficulties.
I, I think we've got that covered. Dr. Lee, is there any?
Yeah, the other thing.
Do you have a couple more comments?
Just the fact that, um, because the, the previous metric was board-approved, we'll have to take a look at this next Thursday at our board meeting and, uh, and make the change or just do some, we can talk about that, but there has to be some board action, I believe. If, if, do you feel that same way, Mrs. Greenberg?
Yes, there will need to be board action because the, 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 the current metrics that we are using were board-approved. So, um, there will, either it will need to be at the next board meeting or the board meeting after that because that would still precede, um, a February 16th return, um, to in-person learning. Or if need be, uh, uh, you know, we can always call a special meeting. But to, yes, to tweak, change, et cetera, would require board approval.
Yes. And it might be as.
Forward on the plan would not, but, but changing the metric would.
Right. And it might be as simple as using that metric as one of the many that we have to make our decision and not the end-all, be-all or something like that.
Well, so.
We'll talk.
So I, I'd just like to say, you know, when Dr. Lee asked, you know, to confirm, confirm to move forward with the plan, even though it still has to be voted on formally in a meeting, I feel comfortable with that so, so that you have my input, that I feel comfortable with it, and I'll let my fellow board members speak for themselves.
Well, actually, Mrs. Brown, we don't need to approve the plan per se. What we would need to approve would be a change of the metrics to return to in-person learning. The plan, as Dr. Lee presented it, does not require our approval.
Right. But he specifically asked us in his comments, you know, to, he wanted confirmation that he could move forward. And so I was just giving my input that, that I feel comfortable with that, and I didn't have any further questions or discussion.
Okay. Thank you. I see Mrs. Mantra shaking her head up and down, Mrs. Bacon as well. So, and we know Mrs. Case appreciates it, I believe, as well.
Yes, Mrs. Case is making a comment.
I also was comfortable with this plan moving forward.
Great.
Thank you, Mrs. Case.
Thank you. And so just my final comment, I appreciate, um, your support of this plan. We're going to work diligently with the teachers. I, I want to repeat again, parents, we're going to need your support, uh, for our teachers. Positive reinforcement is really important. And, uh, I hope this is an opportunity to bring us all together. Whether it's in your mind an ideal plan or not, whether you're a, an employee or a parent or a student, um, I hope this is something that at least we can unite around and work toward and, and, uh, come back to doing great things again. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. I think that concludes the discussion of this agenda item. Anybody else has anything? And I do not see anybody else signaling. It is 3:04. I'd like to take a break. How much time do people feel they need? Five minutes, 10 minutes? Five? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. I think we're still going to be taping, but there will be a five-minute break here and we'll be back at 3:10. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, yeah.
Okay, it is 3:11. So that was our five minutes. It looks like Mrs. Case may be joining us. Let's see. I shouldn't say maybe joining us, maybe joining us in person. Mrs. Case, I see you're unmuted and your camera's off. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Can, I mean, are you going to turn, do you have the ability to turn a camera on or?
I have no idea. I'm afraid to do that. Sorry.
That's okay.
It's been a crazy day.
No, it's fine. No, it's fine. Not to worry. At least you have a box in the grid, so yay. And certainly we'll know when you want to chat. So.
I have to say, I've listened very attentively.
And I, we know you did, so thank you very much. The next item or the second item on our agenda is to discuss how we would like to proceed in regard to our superintendent search. I had asked, I know Ms. Chisman had sent you a couple pieces that were just some items from our last search in terms of a timeline and a flyer we had used. And that's not really the starting point, but, you know, I think we need to discuss right now, you know, we need to decide some parameters on how we would like to proceed with the search. And, you know, I am, I am sitting here looking at a lot of paper that talks about searches. Obviously, most of us have been involved in at least one, if not more. And I think we need to, you know, we have some first steps that we need to decide, which is essentially how we would like to proceed. And that would involve, you know, making some decisions on, do we want to engage the services of a firm again? Are there steps we feel we would need to take before that that we as a board would like to set some parameters, have some discussions, et cetera? I kind of want to throw this open unless you want me to, you know, talk some more, go into some of what I've got here. You know, I think I have information from the firm we used last time. I have some information that Mrs. Bacon sent, and she can probably speak to that better than I can in terms of, you know, in her work with ASBA, some discussions that she has had with boards and discussions that will be coming. So I am very open to, I see Mrs. Brown has her hand up, so I'm going to head over there.
Ken, I know that you're trying to get at this, but so I just want to see if we can clarify the specific goal of this discussion. So I know that there's so much that we could be talking about. This could go on for hours, and we're probably going to need more than one meeting based on what I've understood, even from the time, the previous timeline. So are we trying to come up with our timeline today with special consideration to, like you said, proceeding with whether or not we're going to use a search firm? Or what do we think, I mean, the reason why I'm asking about timeline is, are we also going to address the fact that we may need another meeting? Or I just want to make sure I stay on task.
Okay. We will need many meetings.
Okay.
I mean, this is our first meeting. And at this moment, we are a blank slate of a superintendent search. And I would hope our, you know, one goal I would have out of this meeting is a determination of what sort of support or assistance we feel we need in pursuing the search that we are about to undertake. Whether that, and Mrs. Maturah, I see you're next, so I will, I will, you know, stop in a second. But to me, that would be the bottom, you know, that would be the first goal. I think looking at timeframe makes sense. Again, this was simply the timeline from last time. You know, we are in a different situation. We're at a different point in time than last time as well. And so I think those are aspects we need to look at as well. Again, that, can we discuss more and decide more? Yes, we can, but I think right now it is the, we need to decide the steps and how many of those we can, you know, set in stone today, I think, is, we're going to see how the conversation goes. Mrs. Maturah?
So for those who have been through this process more often, and Mrs. Bacon, who has experience on the ASBA side of things as well. And I know things change based on if you use a search firm and what your parameters are and all of that. But in general, what might we be looking at for a timeframe? And like if we wanted to push it really fast, if we wanted to spread it out? What is a date we could possibly be thinking of to be wrapping this up? Like what is our hope, I guess, versus what is practical? Our hopes versus practicality, I guess, is my question, just to even be, you know, a starting point.
Mrs. Case, did you want to jump in? Because I have a little bit of information I can.
I'd like to jump in. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I, I have a few. I think this is something we can do without what we went through last time. I don't. So a search firm to me would expect all reference, so are you talking about timeline right now? Is that what you want to talk about, is timeline?
Well, Mrs. Maturah did bring up timeline first, so perhaps we look at timeline and then look at firms. So do you have some timeline?
Well, I think they're interconnected because I had come to understand that the firm we used last time would be committed to do something this time for us without having to compensate. Is that correct?
Yeah, if we were to use the firm that we use in our most recent search, the terms of the agreement would say, because it is less than two years since we hired the previous superintendent, that they, you know what, I printed it out, so I don't want to say it incorrectly. I will go straight to it.
Because that might change our timeline a little bit.
Well, yes, they will conduct a new superintendent search at no cost to the district except for expenses. That is the agreement we had with the search firm we used in the previous search.
So expenses, does that include, what does expenses mean?
Well, expenses may mean, you know, bringing a candidate to district headquarters, you know, bringing a candidate in for an interview or those types of things. Yeah, the expenses that would normally be incurred.
Right, but which we would pay anyway. So this is what I, so a search firm, they check all the references and are verified, and we expect that social media has been vetted, including news accounts. And I believe that with this day and age, there's a lot that we can do on our own. And I feel that it doesn't necessarily become advantageous to use a search firm from the experience that all of us collectively have. So I think we need to be very mindful of that and use this search firm since you said, you know, they would do this again, use them to the extent they're not costing us money, and then do it in-house. That was my suggestion, that's my suggestion. I felt like we did some of those activities last time on our own and that we are capable of doing now. And as far as, and in the past, there were certain places to place, as you sent out the flyer, there are certain places that the flyer goes out to, but we know all those places, and we told the search firm where to do that. And because of the internet, we do most of those things. So I'm just saying, it's a different ballgame, I believe, than it would have been 10, 15 years ago. And we have learned that lesson.
Mrs. Bacon?
So a couple of thoughts. I agree with Mrs. Case in principle, but I don't want the five board members to be doing the work. I don't think that's our job. I think if we're going to do it, quote unquote, in-house, I'd like us to perhaps consult with someone, hire someone who is familiar with HR processes. I don't think we can keep it in-house, in-house in terms of our people doing it. I just don't think it's appropriate for our people to be helping us look for their boss. So that's a concern that I have about that. But I agree that I don't know that we necessarily need a search firm. There is some value to, I mean, I guess the other thing that we could do is utilize the search firm's free services to do some of the administrative work that would have to be done, you know, getting applications and resumes and the vetting and those kinds of things. That doesn't mean that we're not going to do our own thing as well, but I don't, I personally am feeling kind of like I would prefer to just hire our own consultant to work with the board and to run the search for us. That is not a national search firm.
I do have a comment. I, first, I think we need to be mindful, and I know we are, but let's just, you know, make it sort of public that we are mindful of the concern that the public, that our community has about the entire process and just the situation that we're in to be, you know, redoing this process again so soon. And I know that we are working towards a process that honors our fiduciary responsibility and that we know that we're obligated to our community and that we are acting in the best interests of students and our stakeholders. When we're doing that, the process to show that, you know, and promote trust and, you know, maintain integrity and fidelity, I think that there definitely needs to be another, a third party, you know, to speak to what Mrs. Bacon said about it, you know, not us doing the work. I agree with her comments about, you know, being careful to have people, you know, sort of in the process of selecting their own boss, sort of thing. But in the interest of our financial and fiscal responsibility, hiring another individual is going to be a sensitive subject. And so if we have the opportunity to use the firm that we used before and guide them with parameters where they can effectively help us through some of the process, it seems to me that we should certainly utilize that with careful consideration for what parameters, you know, that we, you know, if, like Mrs. Bacon just mentioned, maybe if we agree that there isn't a national, you know, need, I would imagine they still could, you know, do some of the work. But then additionally, I just wanted to comment on the expenses. I don't know what our process is going to look like, but some of the initial expenses that might have happened, or maybe not initial, but some of the expenses that may have happened at one time where they would, if it was a national person, somebody that applied and, you know, had to come out, a lot of that stuff is done online now, so I would think some of our expenses would be reduced as a result of that. So that is just my feedback for that part of it. I was hoping, like Mrs. Maturah, that maybe, you know, the date that we're wanting to wrap this up would be a good place to start. However, I understand that if we only have a maximum timeframe of two years to utilize the services of, you know, the other, of the previous firm, that maybe we do need to talk about that first.
Well, let me, I think the timeframe, I mean, I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Maturah, but my take on timeframe was ultimately what's our goal in terms of when we have a new superintendent, correct? And I believe Dr. Lee's preference would be ASP, but I know he is committed to, you know, helping us for as long as we need. Typically, you know, if we take the ASP part out of the equation. certainly we are looking by July 1, which would be the beginning of next school year. And that is different than what is the timeframe of our search. So I'm going to throw a couple of things out because that that relate to both of these items, I guess. One thing that I think we need to know that may or may not affect how we look at this is the firm we used previously has been sold since we used it, and there are new owners, none of whom I know or have, you know, none of whom I believe any of us have worked with. Now, I don't know if they have retained their associates and such that we would be working with any of the same people we have worked with in the past. So whether or not that filters into our conversation, there is that part of it. Now, I also received a call and have spoken to the original owner of the search firm, Rain Associates. I spoke to Gary Ray, and Gary actually is now a Fountain Hills resident and is here. And, uh, is continuing to, has, although I think his intent was to retire, he is not and is still conducting searches. And so, you know, he reached out and I said, we're having a study session. I don't know what the will of the board will be in terms of wanting, you know, assistance or what level of assistance, but certainly that this is on our, you know, this is what we're talking about. One thing he did say to me, or a couple of things he said, because I did talk about timeframe, you know, he said, quite honestly, a search could be done in as little as 30 days. Now, I don't think any of us are looking at a 30-day timeframe, but he said we could do that. So I think we're looking, you know, I think we need to sit down, look at the calendar and look at what we would hope to achieve, but could we do it in as little as 30 days? I have been told by a professional, you know, that we could. So, Mrs. Matura, does that at least provide a starting point for the timeframe discussion?
Definitely, and I I guess my big question was, you know, last time we had a lot of, we knew ahead of time what was coming, what was going to be coming forward. We were planning before the planning. But this time, so I realistically didn't know, is it realistic to have someone in the seat July 1? And so I wasn't even knowing if that was even an option. So I I definitely think beyond 30 days, but knowing that it's reasonable to expect by the beginning of next year, that is helpful for me to get my mind around. So thank you.
Yes, I, you know, I don't think that needs to be a concern. I don't think we're looking at, oh, my gosh, we're, you know, we can't get somebody until September 1 or something. No, that, you know, this is the time of year, I think, you know, maybe a month or two ago, but th- this is the the time of year where I believe in many districts, we're going to start seeing whether superintendents are retiring or not. You know, I know that there are a couple, and again, Mrs. Bacon can can probably speak to this a little bit better, but I know that we're starting to see some announcements of of superintendents over the last few weeks, and I suspect we're going to start seeing that over the next few weeks as well. And so, you know, we're, I think we're embarking on a search certainly a little later than we did last time, but not out of the realm of, oh, my gosh, it's a lot later in the, in a typical process. So does that help?
That's great. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Yes, Mrs. Case?
Um, because last time it took us perhaps five weeks just to find the search firm. And so we're not going to be that much different than where we started last time and within a few weeks. So for for what it's worth.
Okay, I didn't recall it taking that long, but I will, I will take your word for it.
But I mean, it took us a little while. We started, I'm not sure what we started, what month we started in, but it took us a while and some weeks and some time and then to vote on the search form, et cetera.
Right.
And you and I were involved.
Well, there's a, yeah, there's a process, but if we determine that we are going to need to put out some kind of RPRFQ, then yes, there is there is a specific process we will have to follow doing that, definitely.
And and when I was saying to do it in-house, I didn't mean for our employees to be involved with the search in any way or form. That's not what I meant, but as far as putting together a flyer that we put out, that's something we did in-house anyway, I believe. And as far as transmitting it to various search places, that's something our district could do. So the things that our district can do that, I I think there's feasible things along that direction, and do we, have we reached out to that firm that, when is our time limit? Do we know? Where they could help verify and references verified, et cetera? Did they give us any dates on that?
It's within two years of the date of the employment of the superintendent. So we are still within those two years, and we would be there until July 1.
Okay, so we have some some time with that firm then, and and even though this firm has been sold, they're willing to to carry forward with.
I have not contacted them.
Okay.
I wanted to have this meeting first. I did not feel it was appropriate for me to do that, so we spoke as a group.
Okay, because that would be a nice way to utilize money already spent.
I agree.
I think, I guess it's, how, I'm sorry, go ahead. I I guess it, I'm, I'm assuming it also may have something to do with the terms of the sale of the company, whether they're assuming those liabilities in the sale. So we may need to decide, we may need to do some investigating into that as well, because if they didn't assume those liabilities, then they may not be free.
Right.
So, so then the, that would be whose responsibility? Is that the board president's responsibility or?
Unfortunately, I think it is.
President.
We'll reach out.
Okay.
So we will reach out.
So because this is, you know, not the superintendent, I mean, that's new to me too, the the search process, but the idea behind a study session and sort of hashing this out, do we need to create a, you know, like action items? I mean, if if that's one of the things before that we can really determine exactly, you know, who, then we have to do, there's a few things, we're going to agree to that there's a few things that need to happen before we can even agree maybe on which way we're going to go, is that?
So here's what, here's what I think. I think the, one of the things we should do is give Ann permission to talk to the firm that we used so that we can have an understanding of their responsibility in this. Then I think she should also perhaps talk to Gary Ray and anyone else that she feels might be appropriate to get some cost, to get a little bit of cost estimates to see what that would look like. But I do think one of the things that we have to talk about and and really help and need help with, because I I saw when when Mrs. Greenberg said that Dr. Lee said he would stay and help us as long as we needed him, I think he had a little bit like, whoa, I'm not staying for three years.
I meant till July 1.
So I do think, you know, in my perfect world, Dr. Lee would stay with us until the end of school, so that we have consistency through through the year. Change is hard, and I I person, and I've told him this, that I would personally like to see that. So for me, maybe a start date is, you know, I don't know, the Tuesday after Memorial Day or whatever that is. I think switching like April 15th is going to be pretty disruptive to our community. And I could be wrong, but that's just my initial thought around that. So, and and Dr. Lee, if you have something to contribute to that, please.
What I had in my mind, I love you all dearly, you know that, but what I had in my mind is obviously a start date July 1. I think that's pretty consistent with what you'd see, and I think that's what you'd be looking for. But I'd like for us to move as quickly as possible so that a decision can be made, you know, hopefully in March, if that's possible, and I throw that out there. I'd like some opportunity for some transition time with whoever this person is, and whoever it is could, the the level of transition would vary, I would think, depending upon who it is. But even if, even if I were to ask to exit earlier than July 1, if we had someone that we had on contract starting July 1, there might be an opportunity to pay that person a per diem until July 1 or whatever. That's just the thoughts I have. I do not want to abandon this district or you, and so I'm committed to helping in any way I can to, with a smooth transition and whatever it takes. But I would love to go do a little fishing this summer, so.
Well, can you do it July, starting July 2?
I don't know about that, but.
Well, I appreciate that, hearing that from you, because I think that gives us a better sense of the urgency that with which we have to do this, and and I don't, I agree that I think we should have someone in place by the end of March at the latest, have at least someone who we've offered a contract to. So, so it seems to me that we just need now for Ann to kind of go do some homework. And maybe it's not just Dan. I don't know. I mean, if we want Susan to work with her on that in terms of being president pro tem, we also could have that happen. So I'm just going to leave that there.
Last time, Mrs. Greenberg and I worked together on finding the firm, and I'd be happy to do that also. But I mean, not finding the firm per se, but getting through the what we need to to make the decisions upfront. I'm happy to do that also.
Yeah, that was the purchasing committee.
Right, I mean, we worked with the finance and
Right.
and and all those things to come with, anyway. So I think here's.
Yeah, we might not have to actually do that.
Right, but yeah, I think.
I know, I know we went, but I'm happy to do any homework that needs to be done.
Thank you.
So.
Mrs. Matura?
Thank you. Um, so I I just wanted to, it seems like we were were saying similar things that we, this time around, we're looking for a smaller scope, perhaps. And if we can do that with the existing firm, if that contract is still in place, and we can devise what we would want with a smaller consultant, but yet using the bigger firm to do so and not utilizing them as a national firm per se, but to do what we need them to do, that using something that's already paid for would definitely be my preference. But I do appreciate the concept of a smaller scope and a shorter search to get us moving. So that would be my my thoughts. And I am available to assist where needed.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown?
I hadn't addressed scope. I, that, I didn't really think we had gotten that far. I heard Mrs. Bacon mention that she wanted a scholar, a smaller scope. I don't exactly know what that means. I know she meant, I know that Mrs. Bacon mentioned, you know, not necessarily needing a national search and that I unfortunately, I wasn't involved in this process before, so I don't know where the, where the job opening, you know, was posted, and if someone wanted to apply for the job that happened to live in New York, and if if they would see it, I don't know if it's posted on like Indeed or, you know, where. And and maybe the the limitations being the fact that we would not pay for them to come interview or whatever, you know, our limitations would be, but I'm not sure. So I'd kind of asked for some clarification from everyone on what smaller scope is, and then why. We would not want to open it to, you know, others.
Well, I I think there's two aspects to that. One would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Julie and Susan, if I'm like veering into a different area, but I think one part smaller scope in terms of the firm would be in addition to the administrative assistance they would provide, you know, putting things out there, whatever. Part of that is recruitment. So the question becomes, how much recruitment do we want versus how much are we just opening the search and letting applicants come to us, which doesn't limit us necessarily. You know, we can still put it out there. We're just not requesting necessarily, unless people want to still do that. You know, we're not requesting the the recruitment aspect that a search firm would provide. And, you know, right now, and quite honestly, a lot of that happens at conferences that aren't happening. So I think how recruitment is going on right now is vastly different on, for many firms anyway. So I think that's something that we're, so I I'm seeing head shake. So I think that's part of the scope issue. But I think the the other part of that is kind of moving into, and maybe it's, you know, whether this is the time we want to have this discussion or we set the next meeting is some of the parameters, some of the the qualities that we are looking for in terms of the next superintendent, and whether those pieces might limit the scope as well. I know that, you know, ASBA and others have talked about what are the non-negotiables in terms of, you know, who we're looking for in a superintendent? What are the things that we all would agree on? Or, you know, what individually are our non-negotiables, and that may change the scope as well.
Your clarification on recruitment versus accepting applications was very helpful. Thank you. I'm not sure that we need to discuss our non-negotiables today. I did, but I really, really appreciate that clarification, and if we just need to come up with the timeline for how you know, whether it's our meetings or, you know, things are going to go, I I'm open to that.
I I think we should start at the beginning, which is who's going to help us with this? Because we're not going to be able to do it on our own. So it seems to me that we have a sense of our timeframe sometime between the end of school and July 1. And, uh, we need more information about the options that are available to us in terms of the people who are going to do the search or help us with the search. So I would think, let's just let Mrs. Greenberg go do her thing and schedule another time that she can report back to us what it is she's found and and some of the costs associated with those things.
I support that.
I I do believe that much of the traveling that has been done in the past is now being done virtually. So that in and of itself would take away a lot of the cost we spent last time. So that in and of itself would take away a lot of the cost we spent last time.
So if, agreed, Mrs. Case. So is it too short of a period of time or too long of a period of time that we maybe look at you know, her reporting back to us at a study session that could happen before our next board meeting? Or what, what works for within our, anyone have any suggestions?
I'm calling up the calendar.
My, my suggestion is for Mrs. Greenberg to tell us her capacity to get that done. It may be great, and I kind of was thinking the same thing, Mrs. Brown, but you know, we do also have professional and personal obligations, though.
I am hopeful. I can get that information. We do have a national holiday coming up on Monday. But I, I think I can do that outreach and hopefully come up with something. And, you know, perhaps we can, can just communicate that so everybody has the information beforehand so that when we meet, we've already got that base and we're on to the next step, which I think would, would make a lot of sense. I mean, I, I do think we, we are right this moment, we're good on time, but I think as we dig a little deeper and, and tease out the process a little bit more, I think we're gonna, you know, there may be places that, that get a little longer. And so, you know, and, and I don't know, if you guys have, I realize we've now been, we're in, you know, hour three of a meeting, and so I don't really want to impose on your time, but, you know, I do think that there are pieces we need to decide whether, you know, how we're gonna proceed with those and, and even no matter what we're doing in terms of, of, of assistance, however that works out, but, you know, pieces in terms of, of what, what are we looking for in a new superintendent? And who contributes to helping us determine those pieces and how that works? And I do that. I, I do remember, correct me if I'm wrong, that the firm did help us with that last time, but that does add to the overall time.
Mrs. Matura? President Greenberg, I was just looking over the, the timeline that you sent out to us and, and something that the firm did work with us on is developing a survey, which we are in overload right now, and that definitely added to the time. And they did, they did their own meetings with stakeholder groups and with us and, and that sort of thing. So those are some of the things that they did at the beginning was meeting with board members individually and, and doing the survey and meeting with the stakeholder group. And, and those were some of the things that were time consuming at the beginning of the process that they, that they worked on.
Right. And so that's why I think we need to be looking at it, you know, we do need to be looking at a calendar and looking at, okay, we're, you know, this was after we had hired the firm. You know, I think we're in one place. If we, if I reach out to Ray and Associates and they're like, yes, we will honor that and, you know, we bring them back in, we can start. If not, we're at a different place.
Well, I, I can see how our timeline would not be extended by including all of those things that happened last time, like surveying everyone and doing their own meetings. I, that probably falls under maybe the, a little bit of the scope in some ways, a smaller scope. I, I think what, what I would like to see in the future, and I realize there's some limitations to this because everything, our discussions are public about this, but I would like us to have specific goals at each of these meetings so that we are staying within, you know, the lines of what we're trying to accomplish. If, if what President, President Greenberg, if what you're saying is that while we can't, we're not gonna decide today, you know, who it is that we're gonna use, what our timeline is and what we are gonna eliminate, I'm happy to talk about that, but I, I just, I feel like we're kind of a little bit all over the place. And so I want to be able to stay you know, within the guidelines. And, and I didn't think that my understanding from you doing homework, President Greenberg, was that there were basically two telephone calls that you needed to make, which is why I thought, you know, before next week, I mean, before the, the board meeting next week would be enough time. I don't want to extend, I, it would be, I'd be happy if today we just came up with a schedule of how we're gonna make that happen.
Can we, can we speak about availability times? Of, can we look at our calendars right now and come up with the time for our next meeting? And then come up with some things that we want to accomplish in the next meeting and discussing that now?
Well, we do have on the calendar a study session already in place for next Thursday. That's been on the calendar. So what I'm hearing is people would like to retain that so that we have our next conversation about superintendent search.
I would even suggest that we do it previous to that on maybe Tuesday afternoon, if that would allow you enough time, Mrs. Greenberg.
Right this moment, I can't tell you if it would. I mean, I, I will, you know, it's almost four o'clock. Even reaching, you know, Ray and Associates is based in Iowa, so my assumption is they're off the clock. I won't be able to contact them until tomorrow at the earliest. And so, and I would like to contact them first before I contact anybody else. So.
And if I could just jump in there, I think, given that Monday is a holiday, I don't know how successful Mrs. Greenberg will be able to be in that. So I think, but what I do think, agree with Mrs., both Mrs. Case and Mrs. Brown, is we, we really should for the next meeting have an agenda specific to the search. So that when, when we're, when we say we're gonna talk about the superintendent search, we're going to talk about specific timeline. We're going to talk about qualities in a superintendent, or we're going to review the ad that we used last time. I do think we have to have some sense of what it is we want to accomplish each meeting so that we stay on track. But I, I'm, I think next Thursday is going to be probably the earliest we're going to be able to have that conversation just given the timing of some of the things that, that are coming up.
Thank you. Yeah, I, my intention in this meeting was to have this conversation. I mean, I needed, you know, everybody's feedback on how we want to proceed. If everybody were to sit here and go, we're doing a national search again, that's what we're doing. So, you know, I did not want to presume in, you know, to make tons of calls or anything like that before we had this meeting. It's not appropriate for me as a single board member to do that, obviously. So I appreciate everybody's input. I agree that moving forward, we have specific, you know, tasks that we're going to undertake at meetings. And, you know, the, the areas where, as I recall, not every, you know, there are certain pieces that, that happen in a study session and there are certain pieces as we get more into interview process, et cetera, that will happen in executive session. And so, yeah, I'd like to get a, you know, a calendar, start compiling that calendar so we have some sense of people's schedules and how we're gonna be able to proceed. Mrs. Brown?
Well, is it, is it okay for you as the president of the board and our board secretary and Dr. Lee to create a draft of an abbreviated, you know, time, suggested timeline and the, the steps and the process? And then that could be part of our discussion next time, but that way it's not all on you. Our board secretary could, could, you know, consolidate some of the, she, she already knows a lot of this stuff and kind of anticipates a lot about, you know, when things should happen and what we do anyway. And I fully trust the three of you could sort of streamline this and, and really appreciate you giving us this opportunity to give some feedback before you, you went running, but, but I, to help all of us, maybe that, I, I mean, I'm, maybe that's obvious to everyone, but since I'm new, it, it isn't that obvious to me.
Yeah, and I'm happy to help in any way I can, so.
May I ask if we can kind of, between us, come up with what we would hope to achieve on the, in the next meeting?
Well, I don't know what I'd want to achieve in the next meeting. And if, I guess it depends on what the sort of timeline is that is proposed. If, if our board secretary and Dr. Lee and our board president come together, you know, kind of hash through a proposed agenda and or timeline, that is what I would want to cover. I mean, is that?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Can we, or did we last time, rather, did we discuss on the characteristics that we came up with in an, in an executive session or in a study session? Or how was that done? Can you remember?
I think we talked about it in both places.
Yeah.
So.
That's what I recall too.
Yeah.
You know, we all.
Go ahead, Dr. Lee. No, go ahead.
Dr. Lee.
We have, you know, the profile of the, the district and I can't imagine the qualities of the superintendent that you're looking for would have changed too much over the last two years or less. So we have some information in place. I think the first thing probably after Ann has an opportunity, Mrs. Greenberg has an opportunity to speak with consultant, is to put a timeline together, you know, kind of get an idea from the consultant. You know, what is a reasonable timeline for the help that we need from them and maybe report back to the board with information you received from the consultant and maybe a tentative timeline. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes. I mean, I think the questions I would appreciate you guys thinking about and the questions I've had is, yes, we have, well, Dr. Lee just showed it, you know, we have the previous flyer. It lists qualities that, you know, we determined. Now, we, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but we did not do that just amongst the previous five, you know, the five of us who were on the board two years ago.
Right.
There was input, there was community input and stakeholder input. And I think the question becomes, you know, do we want to circle back to that part of the process? Using this as our starting guide or, or, you know, where we started. If you recall, and Mrs. Bacon reminded me of this, you know, part of, part of where we got to with that was the search firm, you know, had this very long list of, you know, potential qualities, which we then prioritized with, with input from stakeholders. And you know, I think the question is, is I would like, or not the question, but, but I guess, you know, I would like everybody to look at that and, you know, get a feel for is, does this still apply to where we are now? Do, do we think, you know, do we want to reach out to stakeholders? And again, that was something the firm helped us with, but if we are sort of on these parallel timelines for a moment, is that something we can ask Dr. Lee to reach out via Slack or something like that? Maybe not, you know, one-on-one interviews, but at least start that conversation. So I would appreciate some input if we want to start that, or do we want to just wait till next week?
I think we need to, I think we need to figure out who's helping us and then let them help us. I don't want to go in a hundred different directions. So I think next week, if we, if we have the agenda to be, you're gonna provide us with information about search firms and some of the options, a tentative timeline, a review of, and not just the dates on the timeline, but the things that happened in the timeline. So that survey is in that timeline. So looking at both dates and tasks. And then finally looking at the flyer, the search flyer, to see if there's anything in there that jumps out as we shouldn't have this, or we need to add something else. So it seems to me those would be three really good things to get done next week. And then next week, decide what, what's the next couple of steps.
Yeah, I can see in, in the flyer, there's a couple of things that need to be changed. I would think the qualities you're looking at for superintendent, as I recall last time, was a comprehensive list, pretty, pretty broad. I think if you're looking for stakeholder input on that, my suggestion would be if the the search consultant does it or whatever, I think it's, would be more of a, here's the list. What is glaring on here that shouldn't be on here? Or what is glaring that should be on there? As simple as that. I, I think to try and start from scratch over such a short period, yeah, I think would be kind of waste of folks' time, really.
I, I would like an opportunity, I would like till next week to look over the flyer. I am not anticipating that we need to start from scratch. I can't imagine even that, you know, that, that we would have to go through all of this, the stakeholder. It, it's possible, but I imagine that it, the flyer is pretty comprehensive and that that's not going to change as much. But if we could, if we could make that discussion around that part of next week, I agree with Mrs. Bacon on that and Dr. Lee.
May I perhaps, Dr. Lee, along with your suggestion, broaden that and say to our stakeholders, this is the list we had last time. Is there anything that you see that is glaringly lacking? Or is there anything that is glaringly not needed? And give them the list and start from that. That way we're not starting from scratch, but we get some input there.
Well, it, it might even be better just to, I have a Slack meeting next week and just talk to them about their thoughts on it and then share that information with you. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes. Yeah, we'll talk, you and I can talk, you know, offline and.
Great. I'm sorry, there's, my computer was dying, so I had to plug it in. I apologize.
That's what it was.
Dr. Lee, I, I know that, that your time with Slack is precious. But I wonder if Mrs. Greenberg could be in that part when you're discussing that, just so she has kind of firsthand understanding of what, what the group is saying.
We could put President Greenberg first on the list.
Yes.
To get her, and then, yeah, I don't think it'll take a lot of, because next week will be precious with the information we talked about today, and I, I don't like to keep them too long, but if, if Greenberg would like to do that, we'll get you first on the agenda. We'll, I'll follow up with you on that.
Yeah. But why, why does Mrs. Greenberg need to hear firsthand what Slack's feedback is before we get to hear? I mean, I'm confused.
I just think a representative from the board hearing what Slack is saying, just, it takes out that telephone thing that, that you get when you have, it's going from this group through Dr. Lee, through Mrs. Greenberg to us. I just think there's more of a direct. And that doesn't have to happen. It was just a suggestion.
And also, along those lines, could. And also, along those lines, could, could you, Dr. Lee, send it out? To the Slack members so they can think about it and mark it up and bring it, and then it'd even take less time. Of the remaining.
I, I could. My gut feeling is though, they're going to look at it and say. This looks pretty accurate. We might want to add this, or, I mean, I think it's. Just, I could be wrong, but I think that's will be the case.
I, I would just like to, I've served on Slack and I felt. Some of the value of Slack was that I offered feedback. That might not be appreciated by some board members, you know. So I, I feel like Dr. Lee. Can make notes about what, or, or as Mrs. Bacon suggested, that if they're going to look at, if they're, if they get an opportunity to look at the flyer. And they want to make some changes, they can provide the written changes either to Dr. Lee. And, and then Ms. Chisman can put those together for us. I don't think it's necessary for a representative from the board to be at the Slack meeting. I, I feel like I haven't given, you know, I, it, it just feels unnecessary.
I, I think one thing I would like to hear is that if, you know, different members of stakeholder groups feel they want. You know, their members to be able to provide more input, that's going to impact the timeline. So that's like the one, you know, to me, that stands out as, as something that would then impact what. You know, we will be discussing later that afternoon. That's.
That doesn't have, that's not that much to do with the flyer, what it is, that's a different part of.
No, because that, the qualities come from potentially surveying folk.
Well, then I expect them to be able to write out those specifics and be able to provide those to us. Without there having to be someone sort of dictating it. I understand that you want to hear it, but I would want to hear it at the same time. That, you know, so that I, it wasn't subject to interpretation from just you. So if we need to have the stakeholders provide input to us, it would be in another study session opportunity. That's what I'm saying. I don't think that Slack is the appropriate place.
It would be through the search firm. Is the point. Mrs. Matura?
I think there's a disconnect between, I felt like going to Slack was just to get some general discussion going. Not to sit and go through this flyer and say, what do you think about these specific things? I didn't think that was the point of Thursday. I thought Thursday was going to be the first time that Slack was even going to start hearing about the superintendent search. And that some of the comments of, oh, I definitely want to make sure you talk to my members. Or I feel like from what we did last time, we have enough from gathering and, and maybe we only need to do this part. I, I felt like it was more of a general conversation you were looking for from them, not any specific feedback at that time.
I think that's what I was looking for, Miss Matura. I, I think, you know, I would like to share this with them. And if, you know, get their thoughts and share that with you Thursday night. I think my meeting with them is Thursday morning, if I'm not mistaken.
And I am not, absolutely not beholden to Mrs. Greenberg being there. It was just a suggestion. It doesn't have to happen. I think one of the concerns. I would have is that the board doesn't hear directly. A lot of the time about this. Process.
Then I would like the Slack to be invited to a study session where they can share input with all of us. So that we could all hear the input. Not that it has to be a formal thing, but, but if Dr. Lee, you know, gets their feedback and provides it to us. Then in the same way, if for some reason we're misinterpreting it or if it's misstated, that they would be at the study session to clarify.
And I would, I, I 100% agree with that, but, but I don't want to put Slack in a position where they are in a public meeting. Being forced to give us feedback that maybe they're not comfortable with. Because it's not a meeting of just us and Slack. It, it's a public meeting where everyone's going to hear everything. And so I'm more comfortable with Dr. Lee just being, providing us the feedback that, that they, that he gets from them.
I am as well.
So may I suggest that they write out their feedback and then we all receive that?
I support that.
We could, again, the question being, I think we're, we're talking two different things. Mrs. Case. You know, the point being is we're not asking them to necessarily comment specifically on the flyer. Just, you know, unless they look at it and go, no, you know, two thumbs up, it's fine. And that's the feedback. I think it's really more the, where we are in the process and. You know, their initial thoughts on. You know, looking at the qualities we're looking at in the superintendent and how much more feedback. I would, I, maybe that's not the right terminology, but how much more feedback. Their groups may want to provide.
So what you're talking about is, as it relates to stakeholder input, is not how we started this conversation. And I understand that Slack is part of, you know, stakeholder input. But those stakeholders need to be advised, those leaders would want to be advised to bring back to their group, their respective groups. That we would be asking for feedback from the groups. I don't think that there's enough time given, if we are asking them to do that, you know, by next week. My understanding was that there was just a couple of things we were going to do and then recon, to create this timeline. That timeline would include how, you know, like getting feedback from stakeholders. I absolutely know that stakeholders want to provide feedback. I'm not trying to bypass that by any means. I, I just was trying to address, we talked about the flyer. And, you know, I, I would like to next week have a sort of plan that includes like the timeline, an agenda that is a draft. Based on what all we've just talked about and what everybody already knows that, you know, the differences are. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk about it in this setting. But so much work needs to be done before we're going to be effective. Because right now, as Mrs. Bacon said, we, we might be a little bit all over the place. So if we could just, I, I mean. Do we not agree that, that. Dr. Lee, you know, Ms. Chisman and President Greenberg can. Sort of streamline this a little bit as it relates to timeline and creating schedules or.
Yeah, we should be able to do that. You know, I think, you know, to simplify this whole thing. I think I just simply need to go to Slack on Thursday and say, part of this process, last time we, we received stakeholder feedback. We created this list a little under two years ago. And we're going to need to either use it, you know, give it the okay or, or make tweaks or. How do you see us doing that with stakeholders and get feedback from them? And I'll share it next Thursday. I think it's as simple as that, really. And I, I will make it clear to them that we don't want a process that's going to bog down the process. And I think, I think they understand that. And I think I can bring some pretty, pretty good suggestions to you next Thursday. That sound good?
Sounds good to me.
And Mr. Greenberg, you and I will talk.
Yeah, yeah, we will definitely talk.
Probably several times.
Really? Okay, so for the good of the order, is there anything else we want to address right now in this meeting? I appreciate everybody's feedback because that's what I was looking for. And next steps, and that's what we have.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for all the, I know, I, I don't know how much work it is to be board president, but I know it has been a lot. I appreciate it. I'm sorry that you're, that I am part of, you know, a training process here, but I, I appreciate it very much. And all of my board members and you, Dr. Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne, for stepping up and doing this. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. So it is 4:19. Does anybody else have anything else they would like to discuss? In the context of superintendent search. Seeing none, Mrs. Matura, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Sound moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes at 4:20 on January 14th. Our study session is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We will be looking at the next one next week.
Aye.
Aye, all.
Bye.